Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the April 7, 2025 Joint Meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners, FAA. This meeting is being recorded for the first order of -- wait a minute. Without objection, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen will facilitate Items 5F on the agenda, with the understanding that the FEA Chair will chair the FEA Committee concurrently, including any allowable discussion, question, business, motions requested or required under Item 5F. Looking for unanimous consent.
Mr. Chairman, after when we get going, give me about a minute to, a minute or two to call. Mr. Mayard, he's on his way home, he's going to join us remotely.
Okay. Without objection, I will chair the meetings and will dial Mr. Mayard in.
Maybe Mrs. Guydecky can open for the FAA.
Joan can open for the FAA. First order of business, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its justice rule.
Before we get started, on behalf of the Board and the town, send sympathies to the family of Vincent Paletta Senior. Then he was a 30-plus-year employee for the town. He worked for the Fire Department, he was on the Call Department, he did mechanical work. His family recently suffered an unexpected and devastating loss of family members. So, on behalf of the Board, we send our sympathies to the Paletta family. Next up on the agenda, number two, approval of minutes from 3:10, 25 to 3:24, 25. What is the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes for 3:10, 25 is written.
Mr. Landry with the move. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Hearing on all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes for 3:24, 25 is written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Landry, second by Mr. Sigunovich. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Hearing on all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next up is citizens' comments. Anybody wishing to speak tonight on an agenda, on something not on the agenda that does not require a vote of the Board? Mr. Clark.
Good evening. Richard Clark, Airport Road. From time to time, the idea of a pilot agreement, if you will, with Nichols College has come up. And I know there have been discussions about it in the past. I just wondered if there was anything that was active presently, or as Mr. Sigunovich's favorite word is, is there a conversation?
So what are we exactly looking for?
Pilot, well, the acronym means payment in lieu of taxes.
An update? Can you address that at all, Mr. Administrator? Has there been any? I know we haven't met with them in a while, they were looking for a meeting a while back.
There was a time when the administration was in somewhat disarray, if you will, but I think that's settled finally.
Want to answer? Do you want me to answer?
Yep.
Um, nothing currently.
Is there still a possibility? I'm sorry?
Nothing currently. You can't force them to do it.
Right.
Can't force them. And last I was told, there was, as far as financial assistance, it was a no. No financial contribution from the college to the town, none.
The only thing I would ask is, that was with the current administration or previous?
Current administration.
Current administration.
Current administration.
Yeah, he was the interim president at the time. He was interim right at the time, then he got appointed.
He was interims, but yeah, current. Nobody's changed, really.
So, takes two to tango and they don't want to dance.
Well, we kind of left it with them too, Carrie, I think. Remember, they were going to offer some services to seniors with taxes, and that never materialized.
Never materialized. Mr. Mayard and I have had discussions about starting that at some point.
Right.
Just because somebody should do it.
Right, there was some kind of excess equipment they were going to donate to the town.
Or marketing help.
Marketing help, that never materialized.
I don't think we need marketing help.
No.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Clark. Anybody else? Sir?
Durgan, 68 Eagle Drive. My question is, who is testing my water right now? Like, the town's not paying for it anymore, is that correct, Mr. Ruda? Mr. Ruda?
No, the town's not paying for it anymore.
So, my water just got tested, who's going to be paying for that? How is it still getting tested if no one's paying for it?
So, as it stands right now, GenTex is paying for it.
And do we have, did you ever come up with any kind of pilot agreement with GenTex to give them?
Do you want me to have a one-way conversation, or you want to go through the chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if you want to answer, I know we won't have a, wouldn't be a pilot with GenTex, I know that. We have a, we had a cost-sharing agreement with them.
Yeah.
Mandated by the, mandated by the DEE.
Right.
Will Phase Two be moving forward with the IRA plan? That is due in October of this year? Phase Two?
If it gets funded, it will.
Well, these, if it gets funded, will we be going back to Weston and Sampson, or are we going to be putting this out to bid?
That's undetermined right now.
And this is, this grant that we just received was awarded to the Water Department? Was, did the Water Department authorize you as the person to apply for the grant? And?
Statutorily, I'm authorized to do that.
As?
Chief Procurement Officer.
Okay, so, also, as this is a Water Department grant, wouldn't George have had to abstain from that last vote at the CIP?
It's a town.
It's awarded to the Water Department, though. It's awarded to the Water Department, have you seen the grant?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, George, you want?
Through you.
Yep.
We can't have.
Yeah, George, if you want to just come up and address it, I know it's not, I know the answer is, but.
This is a project grant through the town, not the Water Department. Water Department is separate from this right now. We may be able to assist in a few things, but that's about it.
But the grant itself was awarded to the Water Department, correct?
Is there a point, Mr. Durgan?
Yeah, the Water Department's involved.
You're right.
Okay. So George would have had to abstain from that CIP vote.
No, not necessarily.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing then, we'll continue on with our agenda. Number four, license and permit. One-day outdoor orchestra entertainment license, Nichols College, April 25, 2025, at Copper Beach Quad, 105 Center Road, 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. Mrs. Bose presenting on behalf of Nichols, nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Heather Bose, 18 Mill Street, Dudley. Looking to get an entertainment permit for Nichols College on the 25th, from 5:30 to 9:00. We have a band playing off the rocks on the quad. We'll have two public safety officers. They'll be serving dinner out on the quad. There'll be a fenced-in area where they'll be serving alcohol. There'll be some games inside there, cornhole and that type of stuff. They're going to, they're renting some swings for in the back. Any questions?
Yeah, permit all in order?
Yes, I have all of the application materials for the outdoor orchestra entertainment license.
Is the public safety comfortable with, have they provided what they're going to exactly do?
Yes, Lieutenant spoke with Public Safety Director, and they're scheduling a detail for that in a minute.
IRN EMS, you don't need to send anybody, are you comfortable? Anybody else, any questions for Mrs. Bose? Would you like to make a motion to grant a request?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the request for one-day outdoor orchestra entertainment license to Nichols College, 25th, 2025, at Copper Beach Quad, 105 Center Road, from 5:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
I should ask the question, does that count like your breakdown time too? Is it nine o'clock the band stops, then you guys will break all the stuff down?
Break down the band or break down?
Well, the band stops at nine, I'm assuming?
Yes.
So, take the fencing down after that, or the next day your staff will take care of it? I mean, it's not going to be going on to 10, 11 o'clock, I guess my point.
Yet, the food court and the bar ends at nine.
Okay, so they'll break everything down right then and then, okay. Motion and a second. Call to a vote, all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Nay? Abstain? Nay? Two nays? Let the record reflect three to two. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep. Public business, parking waiver requested, Wednesday, April 23, 2025, to Saturday, May 3, 2025, on the west side of Center Road, between Copper Beach and the Olson Resident Hall, Nichols College move-out day.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Yes, this is a parking waiver request, some of those we've done last year, where there was a, as the move-outs kind of go, it gives an opportunity to kind of have it staggered over time, as opposed to having everybody rushing at one particular time. So, we limit it to one side of the street. We checked last year with the chief to set it up, where we go from the, just from the dorm to the dorm, so there's no parking up near the, up near the intersection, or in front of the dining hall, or anything else like that. And we limit it to one side of the street, so it's all properly posted up there. We have the police come by on a regular basis and make sure that they're patrolling it. And we put out specifically that it's only for moving in, moving out for short-duration times. It's not for anything for parking there, going to dinner, or any other, any other business. So, that's about the extent of it. I can answer any questions that you have.
So the times would be assigned, Steve, to the students? Like, if they're leaving at 11, they don't have to, like, check with your office and say, my car?
Yeah, it kind of varies, because again, it depends on when, I think, when their last class is, and like, who's going when. So, we're not going to be tracking every individual person going through. But this way, we don't anticipate a large amount of vehicles to be there at one time. You might have two or three at a time for 20 minutes, or whatever it is, and then it'll roll through. It's all going to depend on how their schedules work out. Seniors are going to be still left on campus, because they'll be, they won't be moving out until the night before graduation, which is why it's, graduation's on the 3rd on Saturday.
Any questions, Mr. Wayne? Excuse me, Chair will detain a motion to grant the request.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second by Mr. Shane. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? Call to a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
For one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a follow-up to on the question that came up before. If there's, if there's a time that the Board would like to meet, please just reach out, because I know we've been trying to contact, but there's been some conflicts with scheduling, or whatever it is. So, please feel free to reach out and we can meet up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Parking waiver request, Thursday, June 19, 2025, from 4:00 to 8:00, in the area of Center Road, between Dudley Hill Road and Tanyard Road, for the Dudley Grange 163 Annual Strawberry Festival.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks, good to see you again.
Hi, Karen Gillen, Dudley Oxford Road. I'm here on behalf of the Grange. We've asked for a parking waiver for the strawberry festival on June 19. The festival runs 4:00 to 8:00. And as you're all aware, the traffic is crazy, and it's hard. We do, it arranged with Nichols College to use some of their lots for parking, et cetera, but having the road available is also a big help.
Excellent. Everything in order with your request, right?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for the Grange? Guys want to plug it a little bit? I mean, everybody knows about the strawberry festival, but feel free to.
Yeah, I was hoping you'd give me the opportunity. And this will be our 68th. It would have been our 70th if we didn't have the two years with COVID. But, so we'll be holding our 68th Strawberry Festival this year, which goes, if you do the math, it goes back to probably when some of you weren't even here yet. But anyway, it's a big deal, we get a lot of turnout. It's sort of an institution, it's a family-oriented function. There's something for everybody, there's live music, there's food, there's, you know, we have a, this year, we have Randy Orwick, who is a performer, is a living statue. We performed at Woodstock Fair for a number of years, and he's been with us for the last, it was maybe his third year. We've got children games, the famous old-fashioned frog jumping contest. Whippa Will Stables is going to be with us this year. And we're hoping to have the records and burpee petting zoo again. We've reached out to the Fire Department.
Yep, we'll be there with the safe house and an injet.
Oh, excellent. Did you want to, are you going to go on the road again, park like you did last year?
Yep.
That's your plan? Okay, excellent. They used to put the smokehouse behind the Grange, the food shack, but we have a tree there, and the tree grew for some reason, and there's no more room. So, thank you. We also asked the Dudley Police Department to participate with us. Will you, will you folks be?
Yeah, we're going to try to, let's see, we can schedule the K9, so we show up that day, and the officer's injured right now, but hopefully he's recovered by then, and we'll set something up.
Excellent, thank you. So, where, the other thing I wanted to plug is that we're going to be hauling 1,000 pounds of strawberries on the 18th of June, starting at 8:30, so if anyone's available and wants to get their hands dirty. It's a lot of fun, we set up tables in the, in the length of the Grange Hall, and folks come out, there'll be refreshments. It's a good time. We're going to be selling tickets, strawberry shortcake tickets. By the way, the event is free, there's some confusion about that. This is a, this is a community service, free event for people. But we do sell strawberry shortcake tickets, which will be available at the Park and Shop Courtesy Booth. Also, we'll be selling them in their foyer, June 7 and June 14, from 9:00 to 3:00. So, I hope people will come on out and support the Strawberry Festival. This is a big fundraiser for the Grange. And Grange is celebrating its 138th year next week. Here in the town of Dudley, we've been a viable organization since 1888, continuously running. Used to be Farmers Union, more or less, but as you see nowadays, the farms are gone by the wayside. But we do have our roots in agriculture, but we do support community service and our farmers and the right to farm. And Grange membership is open to anybody, you don't have to be a farmer. One time you had to. I know, if you want to, you know, get involved in your community, you know, get in touch. We have the DudleyFarmers.com website, we also have a Facebook page, so, or you can reach out to me, either way. But I just hope you can all, you know, get the word out and come join us on the 19th.
Will they also be selling tickets in the Town Hall, didn't?
Well, I was going to ask Rich, if that, Rich Kamanyani, if that would be okay? If I dropped off some tickets at the Treasurer's Office, has been very kind to, you know, allow us to do that. So I was going to talk with him about that.
Okay, I think the Town Clerk's office had him at one time too, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you either want, whatever, you know.
Whatever works.
Whatever works, we appreciate.
Excellent. Mr. Wheelock, anything you'd like to add?
Well, that for the Strawberry Festival, if you have a second, would you indulge me on another event? That's going to be coming up at the Grange in a couple of weeks.
Well, let me, let's do the vote on the parking waiver first. All right. Mrs. Basmat, you okay?
I'm okay.
You want to add anything, I mean?
Well, yeah, I'm part of the whole park. We thought we'd consolidate this year. She requested some, I requested some. Obviously, just confused everybody. So, I'm here looking for a parking waiver on Center Road for the Craft Festival, which is Craft Fair and Apple Festival, which is going to be held Saturday, October 4.
Okay.
And it's the same thing, we need parking. I've reached out to Nichols, and they've granted us the use of the 1805 lot. And what I wanted from you people is permission to park on Center Road, because we have a lot of people, and the use of the common. I usually ask for the common, because we have crafters that go over there.
Okay, well, we'll do the, because they're listed individually, we'll do the Strawberry Festival first.
Yeah, all right, so vote on that, I'll wait.
Thank you, well, thank you. I thought you were the choir one, you're going to be more and more like Ed. That's something Ed would have said. I said, I thought you were the choir one, you're going to be more and more like Ed. Go ahead, vote, go ahead, vote on it if you want. Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a motion to grant a parking waiver request, Thursday, June 19, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the area of Center Road, between Dudley Hill Road and Tanyard Road, for the Dudley Grange, number 163 Strawberry Festival.
Motion made.
Second. Mr. Chairman, discussion?
Discussion.
Hi, I just wanted to mention for the Strawberry Festival and for your event, Linda, can you send your flyer to me?
Oh, okay.
As soon as it's available, and we will be happy to put it on our social media, and on our sign boards, and on monitors, and get the word out for you.
Okay. I can do that.
I was going to call you.
Yeah.
She was waving, I know, I couldn't say that's why.
Any further questions, discussion? Hearing on all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Nay? Abstention? Unanimous. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant a parking waiver request for Saturday, October 4, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. in the area of Center Road, between Dudley Hill Road and Tanyard Road, the Black Tavern Craft Fair and Apple Festival.
Motion made.
And?
Second.
On my request letter to the select people, I asked for the common, use of the common.
Motion to add the common.
You can't hear me? And also the use of the common.
I wanted to make my motion to add the common.
Is that okay, is that okay, it's not listed on the agenda as a vote? Just discriminatory?
All included.
All included, all included. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing on all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Nay? Abstention? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now Paul can have his speech, and I'll get you to post it.
We got room up here, Mrs. Bad, you can come up and take over. Doing a good job. Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to just announce that the, this will be the first installment of the Conservation Series for kids. And spring is a time of change. The Dudley Conservation Land Trust will be sponsoring, free of charge, a talk by Joy Marzoff about native animals in springtime and where to locate them. The talk will be held at the Grange, April 26, from 10:00 to 11:00 o'clock. It is geared towards elementary and middle school children, but everybody is welcome. And there will even be some cold-blooded species guests for children to visit with. Ms. Marzoff is a naturalist and educator at Mass Autobonds, Mass Broad Meadow Brook Sanctuary. So, thank you very much.
That's just informational, Paul?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next up, Letter D, we have permission to hold a townwide yard sale, Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with maps being sold at the Town Hall from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00, with a rain date of Sunday, June 22, 2025. Recreation Commission, Mrs. Johnson, nice to see you.
Hello, yes, you too. Roberta Johnson, Jonathan Pass. I'm here on behalf of the Recreation Commission for permission to hold the townwide yard sale on Saturday, 21st, with the rain date of the 22nd. The maps will be sold here at Town Hall. There will be limited spots available for people here. There's notification how to sign up on the Town of Dudley website and Facebook page, or they can email us at recreation@dudleyma.gov.
So what's the cost of the maps?
I think they're $2.
Any questions, Roberta? Hearing on, would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sigunovich.
I'd like to make a motion to grant permission to hold a townwide yard sale, Saturday, June 21, 2025, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with maps being sold at the Town Hall from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., rain date, Sunday, June 22, 2025.
Motion made.
Second.
Multiple seconds. So, I have a question, Roberta. And I, maybe the chief can help us too. I know we have a policy in place about yard sales. So, how do we prevent people from trying to piggyback onto your committee's efforts?
Good question. I don't know, this is my first time coming forward with this. Jen did it last year, so I'm not sure. But I don't know, I don't think anyone has done that, so, I'm not sure. If you're not on the map, people know that you're not part of. of the, um, the plan that we have.
Chief, we still have that policy, right, that's supposed to contact you?
Yeah, there, there's still a policy about notifying the police about having a yard sale, but we've kinda loosened up on, uh, uh, restrictions on it because we're not the yard sale police, but, um, this is, I've never, this is the only time I've heard doing a townwide yard sale. I've never heard of it before.
Maybe, maybe people can kinda stay away from that day to avoid confusion or putting your guys in a tough spot.
I see.
Any questions, any further? Call to a vote, all in favor of granting the request, state aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Nice town event. Next up, under Waldron Cemetery Lot Change, the Cemetery Commissioners vote to approve converting a designated access road in the Crawford section of Waldron into two double grave lots. Take any relative, any relative action there too. Assistant TA, I wanted to give a brief explanation, please.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. So recently, I was out in the Crawford section of Waldron Cemetery and noticed that something that was designated as an access road is not able to be used as an access road. So, the way the lots are laid out, we originally had the access road planned, so you could go from the paved road sort of back to the fence into the woods. However, there have been two lots sold in the very back row. You can't have an access road that goes through lots. So, the two lots, that would be lots in front of those two that have been sold, are currently sitting empty and not designated as lots. So, adding those as two double lots, allowing them to be sold, brings more revenue to the town and allows families of Dudley more options when it comes to burying their loved ones.
Any questions for Assistant TA? And just to be clear for peo- folks, it's, it's not a, it's not currently a road, if MJ was talking about, we'd call it a paper road. It's, it's literally the, the width and depth of two lots that run into two other lots, so it's, as he stated, we're just gonna give more opportunities.
And Mr. Chairman, MJ went out there with, uh, with Brian and took a look at it to make sure that there was, there was no other impediment, and I think, believe he's in agreement with this.
Any further questions on this, on this issue, anybody in the public? Hearing non, we'll call to a vote. Motion, I mean, to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Landry?
Second.
Taken by Mr. Shains. Any further questions, comments or concerns? Hearing non, all in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Nay? Abstention? Unanimous. Thank you. Next up, we have continuing FY twenty-six budget requests.
I'm gonna call Mr. Mayart.
I'm gonna dial in Mr. Mayart, but we're gonna call up Superintendent Steve Lamash. He's at the podium, stand at the podium, Steve, or you can sit at one of the chairs up here if you like, or?
My back, everybody.
Look, yeah, Attorney Blake, I didn't, I didn't see you back there. You wanna come up, sit up here, you okay back there?
I'll fly wherever you need me.
Might as well come up, sure, we have an extra seat. Steve, that's not like a, he's not coming up 'cause of you.
That's why, I'm, I'm trying to make the connection.
No, no, well, somebody asked me, Attorney Blake? I couldn't see him, they said, you wanna ask Attorney Blake to come up, and I'm looking, I go, I thought he was dialing in tonight. Town Council, Jeff Blake, for those that don't know.
Hello?
Okay, Mike, you're on, um, if you could just acknowledge that you're on the phone, state your name for the record, please.
Uh, Michael Matt, FAA.
Floor is yours, Mr. Lamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I wanna stop by, uh, uh, first of all, recognizing and apprec- uh, expressing my appreciation, Mr. Chairman, for attending a school committee meeting at the end of February for us to go over some of these numbers and stuff, and also, uh, Town Administrator and all the town leaders were there as well, so I greatly appreciate that. Uh, not much has changed, which is the good news, uh, from that presentation.
Depends on how you look at it.
Huh?
Could've been good news for us if it changed the other way.
Yeah. I also want to take the time to introduce, uh, from the school district, we have, uh, Mr. Joe DeSantis, who is the Director of Finance and Operations for us, uh, sitting to, he's on the, yep, and then to his left is Mr. Joe Karen, who is the Director of Public Facilities, and then we have our Dudley, uh, School Community Representatives as well. We have Caitlin Panzik, we have Kathy Kamanyani, and we also have Maureen Chikering, who are here as well, in, in support of this. So, tonight's, tonight's a little bit different. Um, I, I'm presenting the budget to you, but I'm also, uh, I also provided you with additional documents, and there are some extras over here for handouts for people if they want them, uh, because we thought it was important, uh, given where we were with the budget this year, to also work hard on our capital improvement plan, which I know you were working on, the town was working on before this meeting started. Uh, but we did have an architectural review, and then we boiled it down for a public consumption document, so you all have that as well, and we'd like to try to touch upon that too. 'Cause we, we, I, I wanna strongly believe that there aren't a, a million questions for the budget this year, but I just, but I'm open to any question at all. Okay, Mr. Chairman? Um, so with this, with this slide, this, these slides that I, I've given you, I would respectfully, if you don't mind, I would skip over a bunch of them. Uh, there's really good information, I would ask you to take a look at them at some point in time, but I really would respectfully ask you to, to go to slide ten. Um, slide ten is assumptions and risks. And this is, this is a critical component of us getting into our fiscal year budget. Uh, this is something we present each year. Uh, you'll take a look at, uh, some of the items here, the bulleted items here. Uh, what we're looking at is minimum chapter seventy for FY twenty-six. The House Ways and Means, I think, are coming out in the next week. Uh, they did work on a supplemental budget as well, uh, that just came out, and there's amendments on the floor right now going for that. They're voting on that on Wednesday, and I'll touch upon that in a minute as well. Um, but for, we're hoping for, uh, stabilization for chapter seventy funding. We are still a, uh, hold harmless district, as we talked about, um, at our meetings. Hold harmless means that we get minimum pupil aid, we don't get anything additional. There are now two hundred, and I, I misrepresented this at our meeting, but there are now two hundred and thirty-two districts in the state, which some of them are now within the, uh, four ninety-five, one twenty-eight belts, so all of a sudden people are standing up and being a little bit noisier about the fact that we're their minimum aid districts, and that they should be receiving additional funding beyond the minimum aid. Minimum aid has been as low as thirty dollars per student, which means we, the Dudley Child and Regional School District receives about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, last year, we were up around a hundred and three dollars per student. This year, the governor set it at seventy-five, and we're hoping to, to land within that zone. We're waiting for the House Ways and Means to come out, but there is momentum there. As you know, we have an excellent representative, a legislative representative for our communities, who is, I, I've, I've spoken to frequently and is fighting for us, and fighting for the regional schools, and also the minimum aid contribution for, for school districts. But once again, there are two hundred and thirty-two out of three hundred and, uh, nine districts in the state that are minimum, um, aid, minimum contribution, minimum student per pupil expenditure, uh, for their budget. So there is a lot of noise around going, going on that. Access and deficiency, uh, it's stable for FY twenty-six, we can confirm that, we did have that certified, that's, that's confirmed. Remember, we use, uh, over a million dollars of excess and deficiency to offset the operating budget. We're still in line to do all of that, that's all in place, which is great. Uh, school choice and charter assessments is stable for FY twenty-six as well, those are forms of revenue, as well as assessments. We have, uh, roughly seven students who are, that will be assessed for charter schools. Seven students is not, you know, it's whatever the per pupil expenditure is for the charter school, but seven students is something that we can manage within our operating budget. It's not something, um, uh, that would be, um, you know, a, a struggle for us as a, a public school district that we have to bring, uh, forward for our funding. Uh, I just have to remind you that we are level funded for supplies and technology again this year. We've been level funded for a number of years now, um, FY twenty-one through FY twenty-six. The only exception we have this year is that we do have, uh, Amazon revenue from the, um, uh, building project in Charlton. That Amazon money is roughly a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and it can be used for all Dudley Charlton schools, it's not just for the Charlton schools. So we are leveraging that against HQIM, which is high-quality instructional materials, as we continue to improve instruction, uh, within our classrooms. Uh, so that's the one exception for level funded on supplies and technology. And then reimbursement remains stable for FY twenty-six. I can't check the box just yet. Um, it looks that way on a number of things, Medicaid looks stable for us. The two that are still, um, uh, what I would say is influx, but influx in a very positive way, are transportation and circuit breaker. So with the House Ways, um, supplemental budget with SRTAX in it, Kim Ferguson, who is a representative, uh, legislative representative for Watch Uset, put a hundred percent reimbursement in that, to amend the bill, so that we get a hundred percent reimbursement for transportation. That would be phenomenal. It's never happened in my entire life, so, well, if that happens, it's great. If we land at ninety-five, even better, ninety, good. Um, so that would really go a long way for us as a school district. In circuit breaker as well, they did put additional money in circuit breaker. This is something that's been happening not only, uh, in our state, but nationally. Um, the, uh, the, the cost of, uh, educating students with multiple disabilities or significant needs that can't always be, uh, provided the, the, um, proper services and support within a public school, require outside of district education, and that can be very costly in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, uh, per student. So, you do get some circuit breaker reimbursement for that. It's basically, uh, a quick formula, it's three times whatever the per pupil expenditure is, just a quick formula, and then over that, you get a certain percentage of reimbursement on that, but there is more effort now to put, uh, reimbursement money in circuit breaker, so that we don't have to offset that with all of our operating budget, if, if need be, uh, because we do wanna meet the needs of our students within our district, in our communities.
Thanks. Just enter, just, I wanna go to, back to the transportation, Mr. Chairman, for one second. When we had the meeting, uh, when we joined the school committee at the meeting a month or so ago, we contemplated, what, seventy-five percent for transportation? Is that what the assessment was based on?
Uh, no, eighty-five percent.
Eighty-five percent?
Yep.
Okay.
That's, we're, we're still there. We try to use the most favorable numbers when we set our budget.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. So that's, those are the assumptions that we, we work through every year. Um, you know, the other assumption too is that Dudley Charlton provides a remarkable education for students on, uh, well, you know, most people don't see it this way, but I see it this way, is on a, a slim budget, a slim budget. And the example I'll give you is, if you've been reading in some of the, the, the news lately, um, there's been some concerns from many districts across our state that ESSR money is being clawed back to the federal government, which is great, but in my mind, I'm sitting here saying, how does anyone, any district have ESSR money left over? 'Cause it was meant to be through COVID and all that kinda stuff. I can reassure you and the community that we have no ESSR money left over. We used it and we tried to transition, we understood the long cliff of that, and so we tried to transition away from that. We have absolutely no ESSR money, but there's some, some people are sitting on millions of dollars, uh, within our state. So I don't, I don't know, but, uh, we, we do operate an excellent, uh, school district on what I would say is conservative, uh, finances, which is, which is okay. We're, we're still doing a good job, we're meeting, meeting the needs of our kids, and we're still gonna try to do that, okay? Uh, on page eleven, these are the areas that are specific, uh, focus for us through our budget process this year. I know in past years, I brought in a lot of information around, um, other things, but these were really the areas of specificity for us. Uh, class size is the school committee goal. It's always an important, uh, uh, focus for us and for our, uh, school committee and for our staff and our employees. Uh, contractual obligations, this year, we were, uh, working on our, our teacher's contract this year. I will say that we do currently have a tentative agreement with the association. I'm not here to, to share the specificity of that, but the good news is that we, the school committee worked really hard and collaborated with the association, uh, the largest association within our two communities, um, and we do have a tentative agreement that we think is, um, a viable agreement, uh, moving forward.
So, before you go on, Steve, we talked at, at February meeting about total student enrollment.
Yep.
We kinda focused on Shepherd Hill. Can you touch on that a little bit, because the numbers are down historically from where they were, right, total students?
Yeah, if, starting in two thousand nine, you can start seeing the, the decrease in enrollment, because that's when, two thousand nine is when the state started, uh, providing minimum aid to, to Dudley Charlton. So you can start seeing that. And there have been trends where it may be, it creeped up a little bit, but it's, it's been kind of a trend down. We're roughly around nine hundred and three students at Shepherd Hill right now, uh, which is down from years past, there's no question about that. But it's, I would call it more of a stable number at this point in time as well. I don't think we're losing more students, and, and if you remember, Mark Abrams came in and presented it when we were going for, uh, the, the support of the communities, um, and said that we are, twenty twenty-five may be a place, twenty twenty-six may be a place where we do see a change, because our enrollment has been somewhat stable, and we're still on track for that as well. But we've got, we have roughly nine hundred and three students at Shepherd Hill right now.
And how did, how did the lower grades look, like the middle school and the elementary schools?
Uh, we're, we're packed. We, it's, I, I'm going to make a recommendation to the school committee to, once again, consider school choice. We can't offer it at the elementary levels in any way. We get calls all year long for school choice at our elementary levels, but we just don't have the capacity. So they're, they're relatively full, our, our elementary schools. Uh, the middle schools and the high schools still have a little bit of room in them, but, again, our enrollment, we're roughly thirty-five hundred students. We're, we've been pretty stable for the last couple of years.
Thank you.
Okay. The other area of specific focus was employee benefits and insurance. We've talked about this, the health insurance costs, I'm gonna talk about it again, uh, but benefits for our employees. We wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing for our, our employees, because they are also residents of the community of Dudley and Charlton, um, and their benefits are an important factor of, of their work. Areas with modest increases from the past years' experiences, if you recall, we came in with some sizable increases on the following items. Utilities was one of them, we do, uh, we have been able to capture that within our operating budget with marginal increases to it, so we've, we've been able to not, there's no need for us to highlight that in our budget season or our budget process this year. Transportation the same, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we were going out for a new contract. Uh, the thing that I do worry about with transportation is we did sign a multi-year contract with the, a year-over-year that we can try to extend it, which is good news. I've seen transportation contracts that are up now, and people looking at thirty percent increases on their transportation costs now, if they're going out to bid now. So even though we were, we were going through a lot of pain, uh, for the communities of Dudley and Charlton and Dudley Charlton Regional, when we had these sizable increases in our transportation costs, we're, we're in a good spot right now because of it, because of the agreement that we have. Um, and then out-of-district tuitions, if you recall, two years ago, or within the last two years, almost twenty, there was almost a twenty percent increase in out-of-district tuitions, because OSD, which is Operational Services Division for the State of Massachusetts, does their own thing, and they allowed, uh, one year a fourteen percent increase on tuitions, and the following year, I think it was, uh, roughly four and a half or five percent. We're looking at about three percent increase this year, uh, which is completely, it was really down, again, something else we can, it's a modest increase that we can put within our operating budget without trying to highlight it for you as a, uh, as a need or a want for our budget increases for this year. Uh, you'll see, you may see those type, things come up again, uh, time, uh, as they come forward. As we know, utilities, we don't know where those will, um, go, but we do sign, we've had some lengthy contracts with them. In transportation, again, the same thing, but out-of-district tuitions, again, we need to meet the needs of our students, so they may come up again at some point in time. So the next page, on page twelve, is the class size and the projection. Uh, it's kind of a misnomer, if you look at the pre-K line, the top line, um, it represents an average class size of thirty-two. Keep in mind that there's, it's two half-day programs, so it's, it's roughly sixteen students per half-day uh, within there. But our class sizes, this, this, this is the first year, and I, I mentioned this in the February meeting, this is the first year I really feel like we have, um, good parity, parity between our two, between Dudley and Charlton and our grade levels. So I think grade, you know, if you look at grade three in, in WL, and you look at grade three at Heritage, where, where we have good parity, uh, close, actually, that wasn't the best one to pick, because I just looked at it real quick. But if you look at, uh, grade four, which is a much better number to look at, you know, you have a class size average of twenty point six and then twenty point seven, much closer. So it's, it's close to parity. Every year, we go through this, because we may have to shift a teacher from one grade to another grade based off of class size. Uh, we may have to ask and add, add an additional teacher, but this year, I think we're in pretty good shape, uh, when it comes to class size for our students. Again, it speaks to the stability of our enrollment.
Steve, what does the, um, redistribute sections mean, like that, just?
Yeah, so we will move a teacher from grade three to grade four, uh, to read, two sections from grade three, one will go to grade two and one will go to grade four.
Those are actually specific positions?
Those are staff, yeah. At, at, within those schools, teachers do, um, uh, have some acceptance that we have to move with the population of students. There is some, I mean, uh, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that everybody loves the fact that I taught grade two this year and I'm gonna go to grade three next year, but we, they do have, they do that other, uh, have that understanding. But we've had years where we've had to shift in other directions, so, again, the, the parity here and the movement is, is, is minimal compared to what we've looked at in the past.
Thank you.
Okay, so on page thirteen, this is, these are the areas of specific focus for us. Um, the contractual obligations, uh, if we looked at our contractual obligations going into fiscal year twenty-six, we're looking at one point three million dollars. I, I've shared this with the, with the, uh, school committee, I've also shared it with both towns. Uh, contractual obligations annually are easily a million dollars, if not more than a million dollars. Um, this is obviously a little bit higher than a million dollars, but that is from year to year, based off of what you're budgeting and what you're trying to work on for, for contracts. So we, we have met our obligation, contractual obligations of one point three million dollars through our negotiations. So that number, um, is not going to change. That's the good news. Um, employment, employment benefits and insurance, uh, we were looking at a one point six million dollar increase, just if we, with all the numbers we have. We've had a couple of bad claim years, uh, within our particular district. Our insurance was set to go up by twenty-eight percent, uh, coming into this fiscal year. Uh, we've heard across the state that some, a lot of insurances are going up right around the twenty percent mark. Uh, we've been able to work that twenty-eight percent down to twenty percent at this point in time. Uh, we are a member of the Master Teacher Health Group. Uh, we did, as a member of the Board of Directors for that, we did take a vote, We are a member of the Master Teacher Health Group. We did, as a member of the Board of Directors for that, we did take a vote last week, I believe it was last week, sometimes my weeks all blend, last week, and we voted a twenty percent increase for Dudley-Chowton for benefits, for premium increases. We've also been working with our association on some plan design changes as well, and some shifts in there. And, and again, I think that we're in, in much better shape. So when you look at the one point six, that was based off of the twenty-eight percent increase. That was based off of not having some negotiated shifts in, in plan design changes. We were looking at two point nine million dollars. But our goal all along was to try to reduce it to get to a little bit lower. So you have the initial eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars, which, if you look at the next page on page fourteen, how do we get two point nine down eight hundred and eleven dollars? Again, we're using the transportation reimbursement that we talked about. We're using the seventy-five dollars of minimum aid. Mr. DeSantis is our new Director of Finance and Operations, and he scrubbed every single line, very detail-oriented. Sometimes we get used to certain, you know, someone could look at it as, you know, zero-based budgeting. You're looking from the zero up. That's what Mr. DeSantis did. So he was able to scrub some of the lines and, with a new set of eyes, and try to scrub those lines so that we can try to see if there's more savings. We do have lower utility costs. We have solar coming on. We also have, Mr. Karen is working with, I want to say National Grid, maybe it's not National Grid, for our Dudley Middle School roof. It's solar-ready. As you, if you recall, with that roof project, we made it solar-ready and National Grid, and we're trying to see if we get into the pipeline for the grant for that, to put solar on that roof as well. We are still using attrition. We have one teacher that we're not going to fill. That's how we balance budgets. That's not going to change. And we do have one district office clerk that we are not filling that position, and that position is open right as of today. So that's how we reduce the two point nine million dollars off of that, but we know we need to go further for our communities. We, we really appreciate the community of Dudley and Chowton and the support that we've had over the past couple of years. I know it hasn't been easy. It hasn't been easy for myself as superintendent, but it hasn't been easy for our school committee, it hasn't been easy for our staff. It hasn't been, been easy for community members to take on the costs of running a school district, a public school district. So we really wanted to work hard to try to see if we could bring down the three point five seven percent, which is represented by the two point one million after we reduced the eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So we were able to work hard. Again, this is now incorporating, the slide's a little choppy. This is now incorporating going from twenty-eight percent in health insurance down to twenty percent. This is now incorporating some plan design changes, which will help us offset the cost as well. So we are looking at a two point seven four percent increase for our budget for FY twenty-six. So the number sixty-one, five, twenty-eight, three, fifty-six is the number that was voted by school committee at their March fifth school committee meeting. Keep in mind, these numbers do not reflect the capital commitments of six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that are within the assessment sheets. Okay? Any questions on that?
Yeah, those are the capital commitments that, that we already dead-excluded? We're talking about different ones?
Yes, yes.
Previous voting on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. The next slide talks about the, the use of the, the Amazon money. I wasn't going to look closely at that. The slide after that, number seventeen, typically, typically, every year we provide a list of reductions. I'm not providing a list of reductions at this point in time other than the attrition because we feel that we're, we have worked hard to try to come in with a reasonable budget for both the town of Dudley and the town of Chowton moving in. So page eighteen is your assessment sheet, is the assessment sheet for FY twenty-six. This was voted by the school committee at their March fifth meeting. So the, the total budget is sixty-two, two, nineteen, four, thirty-four. The assessment for the town of Chowton, just so that everyone is aware, is twenty million, two, fifty-six, nine, forty-nine, which represents an eight point nine nine percent increase. Keep in mind that, the, the other thing that's happened and worked for Dudley too is, is Chowton's assessment is, is definitely has increased, but it's based off of their economic development that they've, they've had over the past couple of years. It's no, no other major shift there in some other way for it. It's with, it's baked within the formula. And so the, the Dudley assessment is twelve million, five, five, seven, two, seven, three, which represents a two point five eight percent increase for next year. So that is, that is what represents the FY twenty-six budget for, and we, again, we feel like we're coming in with a pretty good number for you this year.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Mr. Superintendent, if I look at the Shepherd Hill field, Chowton versus Dudley, year-on-year from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six, I see a difference. Drops from sixty-eight, nine to fifty-eight, six for Chowton, and Dudley is sixty-four to sixty-four.
Right, so you're talking about a five thousand dollar difference?
Just wondering why one went down, one didn't.
I don't have the exact answer for that.
So it's just simply based on?
Want to, want to come up? Can you come up, please, and identify yourself if you don't mind? Rich, I should have offered you to come up too if you want, because you've got CIP and you next, but if you want to come up for the town's portion. Yeah. Rich, you can come up too if you want.
Yeah, so the capital, the capital commitments that are required from each municipality are strictly related to the amortization schedule and the agreement that had been put in place at the time of the capital commitment. I had provided both copies to Chowton and Dudley that showed the year-over-year breakdown. So if there's any follow-up, if you'd like me to forward that, I'm more than happy to.
Question was specific to the five thousand dollar difference between the assessment to Dudley for the football field, turf field, and for Chowton.
Actually, my question is, why did, why did Chowton go from sixty-eight, nine to fifty-eight, six while Dudley went from sixty-four to sixty-four?
Right, yeah. So that, again, that just speaks to how it's designed on the amortization schedule. So again, if I pull a copy of that, it has both municipalities' commitment on a year-over-year basement, a year-over-year basis. So again, it's, some of them were more front-loaded than others, some were more even on a year-over-year basis, and that's something, again, I'm more than happy to provide you a copy of.
Mr. Chairman? Got a follow-up question. If I remember correctly, there was a lot of donation money tied into this field. Does anyone know how those payments are going?
Yes, those payments, there was a little bit of a pause, but they are coming back online.
Any way we can see the details on that?
Sure. Not, not tonight, but yeah.
Yeah. So when you said you provided the numbers, were those to the selectmen's office or to the treasurer?
Uh, treasurer's offices, but I can, again, go back and trace those if needed.
Rich, can you come up and address that, please, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Good evening. Want to say the email had been forwarded from the town administrator to my office. If you give me a moment, we should have the amortization schedule.
Is there another question while we're waiting?
Yeah.
Good. Anybody else?
No, he, Mr. Johnson answered his question.
Five thousand dollar detail, I get it.
Well, the other part too, to see if the donations were coming in.
Yeah.
If you, I can't locate it immediately in the folder. We'll go to the sourcing. We'll be back in a minute.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
No way we can, do you have it, Joe, on your computer?
I'm trying to pull it up now. If I'm able to get it quickly, I will let you know.
Any way to jump it on the screen? All right, just a question.
Okay, so the next step is for us to finish meeting here, but we're going to meet with the town of Chowton on the sixteenth, and then we've town meetings. Keep in mind, town meetings are on, on the same night as they were last year, so Joe and I have not drawn straws yet.
You're the boss. How do you draw a straw?
Want to make him feel like he's got a, a choice.
Empowerment.
Empowerment of the straw. Okay?
One straw in your hand.
FAA members, any question on the presentation?
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, I guess if things all go everything in a great way, then we have potential.
Change of view.
If everything doesn't go according to plan, then maybe we go something else.
Well.
What do we think that's a bit under the budget and then just?
I, I have a level of confidence that we're going to, again, with the movement of the legislators, I think that we're going to fit within our budget this particular year. For reductions, I would, I'm not trying to be funny, even though I like to crack jokes and stuff like that, but it would be the same reductions we've had year-over-year-over-year, that we, we have very limited areas in which we can reduce from, unless we're impacting classrooms, and that's, school committee is, is hell-bent on not impacting class size. So it would be programmatic. It would be, again, I didn't want to throw them out this year because I didn't want people to be, have that level of unrest that they have year-over-year. This is the first year I've done that in six.
And I think I remember last year, so they.
We have the list. We have a list, yes, that we work on a regular basis.
Mr. Mayor, any questions from you?
None for me.
Anybody else in the FAA, anything? Mr. Kanesny from the crowd?
Good evening. Paul Cornet, one forty-seven Chowton Road. As many of you know, recently retired as Deputy Fire Chief here in town, a question to the school, I just don't know who it would go to, whether it be facilities, business, or right up to the superintendent. In your extensive building facilities needs report, it's an extensive report, and if I walked over it, I apologize, but was there any thought of adding in testing or the inclusion of a BDA within your facilities? A BDA is a bidirectional antenna, so when public safety goes into your buildings, their walkie-talkies essentially, their, their portable radios sometimes have difficulty getting from within the building outside to the incident commander. And a bidirectional antenna is a test that would be facilitated within each building to determine whether or not that antenna is actually needed. Some facilities do not. I know on our side, I can't speak for Chowton's side, but I know on Dudley's side, the middle school is nearly impossible, and I believe that Public Safety Chiefs will back me up on this, where a, a portable radio just cannot get out of that building. So you actually have to have a runner go outside and speak to the incident commander to actually get information moving back and forth. Again, if the BDA is in the report, I apologize, I may have walked over it, but I think that's a, a critical aspect of public safety within your facilities.
I, I can't disagree. I, I'm not sure it's specified completely in, in the capital report, but we would certainly put it under consideration, without question.
So, to the two, to?
But we were going to get into that presentation after this, after the budget.
I know, but that specific issue, I was going to talk to the two chiefs. Can you guys work with your counterparts in Chowton and what Paul was talking about? Yeah.
Well, if they, if, I haven't seen that report, but I'll come.
Thank you.
Through the chair. If, if, I didn't see the report, but if they break a certain threshold of renovation, a certain percentage, it's required by the code anyway. So I mean, once they start doing their renovations, building new structures, or whenever that comes down the road, then it's going to be a requirement anyway.
Mr. Chairman? We appreciate the district, the school committee working with us this year, and I think that, you know, two point five eight percent, I certainly would recommend going with that assessment for this FY twenty-six. I, I appreciate the work that's been done on this budget.
I agree. I think that February meeting that you alluded to earlier, and a bunch of us were at, was very beneficial. I mean, it was a good turn off on both sides and.
Yep.
With give and take.
All right, thank you. And again, I'm, I'm happy to report that not much has changed, except where, again, I, I still want to have confidence that things are moving in the right direction when it comes to our legislators supporting transportation and circuit breaker. You know, those costs that not everybody sees. People tend to focus on the minimum aid, which I get that, that is a good focus as well, and I don't want them to let go of that, but the other incidentals that really cost a lot for us that we, we need addressed as well. And regionals tend to be left out of a lot of legislative action. But again, we have a strong advocate there now.
I think Rich might have what we were looking for, Mr. Johnson. Thanks, Rich.
Good evening. More, the more recent email for Mr. DeSantis was for the roof project, not for the fields. So for the purposes of expedience, it'll be a follow-up item.
Okay.
Again, we'll, we'll get that and we'll send it over.
Okay.
Thank you.
As well as the other information you requested.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Hearing none. So can I call a poll vote to accept their recommendation? Are we ready for that yet?
I know. What I'll do, Mr. Chairman, is I'm going to have, at the next meeting, we'll have.
Finalized.
We'll have the, the entire budget on one spreadsheet, and we can go line after line. But as it stands now, I have no question about their assessment.
Mr. Chairman, I do want to turn, I do want to get to the capital because that's a very big, it was an endeavor. But keep in mind, the capital project of the architectural review was part of the capital, capital monies and capital plan that was provided in twenty twenty-two, so that was why it was accomplished. But our job was to try to bring, bring all that, bring this very lengthy report down to something that's more consumable and to look at it from the perspective of a conservative approach as well. So I'm going to turn it over to, to Joe DeSantis to do an introduction, and then Joe Karen can come up and talk about his document, which is the stapled part of that instead of the full document.
Okay. So I think it's worth noting to, prior to this discussion, that both the facilities' condition assessment and the capital plan that we have, our ten-year capital plan, are available at the DCRSD website. So if anybody needs to pull a copy at any point, it is now available at your leisure. For those who remember, in May of twenty twenty-four, Habib and Associates was contracted to conduct a facility condition assessment for all seven schools within the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District. It was approved as an outside capital expenditure, and it was developed to address the physical structure, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire, fire protection, sewage disposal systems of all schools and surrounding areas. The assessment described the current condition and provided priority recommendations and collective estimates for each repair or replacement of deficient building components. This facilities' assessment was used with the goal in mind of being able to create a ten-year capital plan that would address the needs of the entire school district. Joe Karen's done the next one job, putting that together. The facilities' condition assessment summarized the aging infrastructure of all of our schools and created the needs of each facility on a scale of immediacy. So as part of our response to that assessment, Joe Karen, along with our head custodians of each school, organized each students', each student, each school's needs and projected these within a ten-year capital plan. The capital plan tried to be cognizant of factors such as order of operations for each particular project, trying to avoid things like reoccurring administrative costs by piggybacking certain projects together in a manner that's more efficient, and also, of course, prioritizing need. It's also worth noting that IT needs that are capital in nature have also been added to our capital plan, which is outside of the facilities' condition assessment. So you'll notice that within the capital plan as well. With, the capital plan essentially seeks to address the needs that each school has before we're put in a position of any type of building failure. So, so again, we're trying to put those needs in order of prioritization, what we may be able to afford on a ten-year basis, and minimizing overall recurring costs. So again, to describe more in detail and to answer your questions about the assessment of the plan, I'll turn it over to Joe Karen.
Hello. So Joe Karen, Director of Facilities. Let me speak to the process first, if you will, if you want that. The facilities' condition assessment, Habib and Associates, they sent a team of architects out to all seven of our schools in the district. They spent approximately twenty-four hours, man-hours, in each school, going through fine-tooth comb, taking pitches. And if you go through this report, you'll see the detail at which they did. One of the things they did, if you look, and I tied it to the stapled budget that I sent, proposed ten-year capital budget. They identified all the categories based on numbers. So the ones would be the site, the two would be building envelope, threes are building interiors, four mechanical, five electrical, six would be like the equipment inside of each building, like the snow equipment, lawn equipment, backhoes, such as that. And then seven is IT. So all the numbers that you would find identified in a per-school basis and the pitches, those directly correlate to each school on the ten-year capital budget, so that it's easy to cross-reference. If you turn to page four of the ten-year proposed capital plan, there is a totals page there, which can kind of give you an idea. There's some heavy-loaded years, obviously. Buildings in the district, the, the newest ones are from two thousand, so our newest equipment is twenty-five years old. That, that said, withstanding the Dudley Middle School roof, obviously, that was just done a year and a half ago. So we have some heavy-loaded years where the roofs and the boilers need to get done early on because we are seeing potential failures starting to arise there. I don't know how far in detail you guys want me to go here. There's a lot of information to digest. I don't know if any questions stand out.
What do you have a question yet?
There's a, there's a lot of information between these two. We did our best job. I sat down with each head custodian at each school, looking at the assessment. They prioritize things on a, you know, immediate, moderate, a three-phase, a three-category need of emergency. We tried to spread that out over ten years to make it obviously more acceptable budgetarily-wise.
Mr. Chairman? So we can reasonably anticipate that this ten-year plan is going to. Mr. Chairman, so we can reasonably anticipate that this 10-year plan is going to begin showing up next fiscal year as part of the assessment, the capital portion of it?
Yes. I would assume, I mean, it would have to be.
I mean, that's what the heads up is all about, right? That's why we're getting the heads up.
This is, well, this is the first step. So if you look, the first year is, Stephen Washington, first year is 2027. So for us to start planning for this for FY27.
Okay.
In the interim basis, too, we're still going to explore MSBA for not only for school projects, specifically Shepherd Hill as well as Heritage Elementary School, but we're going to look at it for accelerated repairs on certain things, certain items, which they have supported over time as well. So we will take a look at those as well. But we are gearing up for that. We're trying to start, this is the first step in this, is the school committee reviewed this at their last meeting, and they voted to approve the 10-year capital plan. Now it's to bring to you, and we're not asking for a vote this evening, but we want to try to give you a heads up. This is not for FY26. This is moving towards FY27, and we welcome your feedback on it.
So to cut through all the numbers and categories, you've got some people up here that crunch numbers, and they got a couple of funny looks. You're looking at about $40 million over 10 years on the Dudley side.
Yes. And that Shepherd Hill number is based on current enrollment, so that's, the cost on this is not, is only 46%.
Right. So I could shift a couple of points either way, up or down.
And.
Mr. Chairman, and Board of Suckers, keep in mind the way the regional agreement is, is that Dudley's responsible for all the Dudley schools, with the exception of Shepherd Hill, that's a shared cost.
Correct.
So that's why you're seeing just all the Dudley schools here, but the Charlton schools are also within this report, too.
Right, but the Dudley portion shows a figure of 39.4.
Correct.
1.9, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So basically 40. And as Joe just stated, enrollment could shift it just a matter of a couple of points. At that point, it's like swimming in the rain, you're already wet.
You know, 10-year capital plan priorities are going to change year to year as you go through the years. You know, oh, boilers might not be the biggest concern, the roof is really getting bad. Things could change year to year. The other thing that I would speak to is we don't know, you know, construction costs always rise, prevailing wage rates always go up. So this, also with the state, you know, the costs here given to us by the architects, say for the boilers, that's for a kind of direct replacement. I'm sure if the state gets involved, they're not going to want oil burning devices anymore. So what we're going to be mandated to have to use could be a consideration for cost fluctuations based on the estimates here as well.
Mr. Chairman, I'll point out that there are probably some opportunities for us to work cooperatively with the Dudley schools with, you know, grant funding opportunities that we may not necessarily need, but the Dudley schools will be eligible for, for like green communities and, you know, HVAC replacement, there may be some opportunities to work together on that.
Green Communities is working through right now for a proposal with Dudley, so, excuse me.
Questions?
I'm sure there will be some in the future, but it's just a lot to take in.
You good with your presentation? You want to keep going a little bit?
It depends how far in detail you want to go. I mean, we can.
Any questions from the FAA right now, what we're seeing?
No.
Any questions from the audience? And again, this is all online, people can.
Both of these documents are online. If you go to the finance page, there's a capital planning page. Both these documents will be at the very top.
Board members, any questions? Well, if we dig into this, we'll, we get something, we'll collate it through town administrator and send them to you folks instead of me writing you, and you might write to him, and try to, if we get questions, we'll form them off through the, same with the town. Anybody with a question, please forward it, or if you want to reach out direct, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we have to come back to.
Okay. Yeah, if we get into it, it's like, Jesus, there's too much to do through email.
Like I said, it's a fluid document. We, you know, as Steve spoke to, you know, we had a line item for every school to install LED lights, but we're able to get, work with National Grid, do some 0% financing on bill, get the projects done, wipe out a line item for seven of the schools within the last year. Got some VFDs also from National Grid to help all our equipment run as efficient as it can. So we do explore opportunities as they come up. So this will be a very fluid document year to year.
Excellent. You good, Mr. Administrator?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
ATA, you good? Everybody good?
I do have one question.
Go ahead, Robin.
So this is probably for Rich Carmaniani. If it's a $40 million, I'm making approximate estimates here, $40 million over 10 years, would we be looking for some sort of, I don't know the term, debt exclusion of the entire amount, or would we look for that like year to year?
Good evening. So the financing for the project would be for the apportioned amount, so it would be the Dudley amount as the district agreement states.
So we would, I guess.
We would want to. There's, there's no big jump in the revenue coming up, so these are the things that you would want to exclude.
Right. And then even though, even though the amounts aren't static every month, we'd, that exclude the big amount, and we would pay our portion, you would pay when they send you the bill, what they do now in the assessment.
Back to page 16, on the slideshow for the first portion of this, there is a capital amount, and all but 9,500 of it has been excluded by the Town of Dudley. So for funding purposes, it is the preferred way of operating, yes.
Excellent. Is that the question, Robin?
Yes.
Mr. Lamash.
Mr. Chairman, we're not prepared to come in and ask for a 10-year, $39 capital approved right now. We're not prepared for that. So we're giving you what we have, we're giving you all the details. We may want to chunk it. I would recommend that we chunk it. We don't do $40 million at one swoop because things do change over 10 years. So again, we're trying to get this out, we're trying to get this out to our partners in Charlton as well, get the feedback on it, and then start planning with you as a community as to what the next steps would be on that.
Right, yeah, but I think the question was, if, that right now, it's a fluid number, but using the best number we have, how would we look at it as a community paying? And I think, Robin, I agree with Rich, it would be some kind of debt exclusion when the numbers come in much more firm.
Through the chair, I agree 100%. I just don't want the $39 million to be floating out in the community that that's what we're asking for for next year. I just want to be clear about that.
Oh, no, no. I don't, I don't, I don't think that, well, I mean, I'm sitting here, I don't think that was.
I just thought I'd add the clarity.
That's, more information is better than.
$40 million next year.
More is better than less. Thank you. So we good with the schools? Everybody okay? I want to thank you guys for coming in. I hadn't met you before, but I met Joe at the February meeting, so put the face with the name, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dudley School reps for showing up. So next up, we'll have the capital projects update, BOSS vote to approve capital improvement recommendations, are taking relative action there, too.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that we put this on the next agenda because Olivia will put together a document, the chairman of CIP will sign it, and then you'll have a document to vote on.
Without objection, we'll postpone to the next one. Next up, treasurer collector, Rich Carmaniani.
So hopefully, this is an abbreviated budget review, and that financial team had a chance to sit down more than a week ago to go through sort of that deep dive. We'll try to keep in order. The salary portion is pretty straightforward. The big, the big change would be for the part-time. If we were to go through and extend out the newer counter-help, that number represents the average hours for 52 weeks. Next item up, data processing. Now, when we went through and did data processing, postage, software upgrade, and down to expenses, these are the purest numbers for explanation purposes. The data processing is what it costs for the collector treasurer's office to process a bill and get it sent out. It's not the computer support. It is the envelope, the bill, the processing, bill stock or plain paper if necessary. As of today, it's the 25, 335, and that's the review of all of the expected two billings for the real estate, including personal properties, one demand for it, boat bills, all of the excise, and the expected demands and follow-up for it. For what it's worth, you're sending a bill out at about 92 cents, including postage, and that is with the envelope, that is with the bill stock, and the processing. For sending out bills more than 500 at a time, there is a discount which matches the postal rate. So somebody is able to go through local vendor and for 69 cents, process the bill, put the indicia on it, seal, fold, what have you, and send it out. So literally, it's a zero cost for most of the billings. That is a good thing. Next item up is the postage, something very interesting that comes up. We have about $15,000 in postage already used this year. Remember, when you go from 62 cents postage to 68 cents postage, that's 6 cents on 62, so that's a 10% increase, and that is for the machine that is here. It's an efficiency. We're able to go through and process the larger mailings for the assessor, for the town clerk, so on and so forth. Plus, there's the monthly, monthly rental for it. For what it's worth, you spent $450 in the past 12 months for a replacement part. So we're treating it nicely, and the machine is lasting. That would also include the, any ink or supplies that were needed. After the postage, we go down to longevity collector. That's just part of the salary, 20-year employee here. Software upgrade is pretty much the apportioned bill for Vadar. The Vadar has three sections. There's an accounting, there's a tax, and there is a utility. Utility is your water and your sewer. So we have a formula where they have gone through, apportioned the bill, applied a discount, and then by user, there is a charge. And if you see, it's practically the same. And this is, this is a bill. We are a long-term customer, and I believe we're year four out of five, so we have our 14, 302. Back to expenditures, next line item, I think 13, 865 from the previous year was artificially short. We're at 18, 5, which closely aligns to the previous year's number. And again, we're paying our weekly expenses out of that and the modest amount of supplies that would be outside of the production of a bill. The Harper's Cloud payroll, that dollar amount, if it's not expended in this year, would be saved for next year or encumbered for next year, depending on how, how that project is effectuated. It's not the weekly charge, it is the conversion charge. Right now, there is a payroll forward as opposed to the ESS, which is a different platform, but it goes into another conversation because the more recent import-export has another Vadar module that we don't currently have in use. I've spoken with the people at Harper's and at Vadar about this, so it's a matter of making sure that things line up. There's a few unique things that are in Dudley, but the answer was absolutely it is something that can be done. Next item up, you would see the unemployment self-insurance trust. We put that $5,000 in there for unemployment. That is the budgeting mechanism to feed the trust money for unemployment. For what it's worth, we've already expended $5,000 this year in unemployment benefits. We will go through and hopefully add to the trust, and next year would be an add to the trust rather than an immediate expenditure. While we're on unemployment, right now, the Town of Dudley uses the Maya unemployment program. Maya offers the property and casualty. There is another service that Maya offers or encourages us to use. There is the management of unemployment, all of the claims and what have you. They are our best defense. We are a pay-as-you-go. This offers an agent to go through and best address any changes that we, we would need to challenge. Coming in fiscal '26, there may be a cost associated with it for its use. County retirement, anybody have a question on that? That's, that's our bill. If, if you would permit me, that's the, the cost for our participation in the Worcester Regional Retirement System. There is a generic assessment. We have gone through and we have broken it out by a general fund. We have a water sewer component, a water component, and a sewer component. It's because we have those enterprises that we are allowed to go through and sort of carve that amount out, depending on how deep you want to get into the weeds, the, the best thing to say is, that's what it costs to run the system and our, our portion of it. We do take the early payment discount, so 50% of it gets discounted, the, the rate that they use, 6.8, and we save a little bit of money that way. Continuing our group insurance, group insurance is with the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust. During the review with the financial team, we were able to go through and have that, like I call the deep dive. These are how many people we have, these are the expected hires for the year. We know the increase for the health insurance is 18%. It's going to be 20 for the PPO. There is a presumption of a similar amount for the January 1 renewal, which would be the Medicare. All of those numbers were assembled. We netted out the water in the sewer, who would be paying their own, and had our budgeted Questions?
Before you're done, I have a question.
Of course.
On the data processing line item. This past year, you had $14,500, and for 2026, it's $25,000.
Yes.
What?
So.
How is that different? Do you have that many more bills to send?
It's, it's sort of a reformulation of what that should be. The original data processing were all of the charges that were going to the previous vendor, and we had gone through and separated out. Actually, I think I might have a second page. Actually, I think I might have a second page. Mr. Chairman, through you, to the town administrator. Some of these were in the Board of Selectments. They were uploaded in the backup.
So the increase is coming from somebody else's budget?
This is, this is a, the previous year's budget number was not, was not accurate. If you, if you wanted to take a minute.
That's fine.
And we can review these. It's sort of the by-bill type, actual bill date, extended out with no increases other than, you know, basic presumption on. So with the insurance general, excuse me, group insurance. Our group insurance, as the superintendent head referenced, and I think everyone is experiencing, there is, there is an increase everywhere. The Hampshire Council of Governments is going to confirm the increase of 18% at a meeting coming up. It is the cost of healthcare right now. Also, I think there is a modest migration from other plans to the trusts plan, who had been, had been very successful in the last few years. You wanted to get up to the Medicare dollar amount of $80,000. Just a simple calculation of Medicare expenditures, or actually, we took the W-2 amount for Medicare remitted for the year, subtracted out the sewer amount, the water amount, and that was our, our dollar amount. Remember, it's not just pensionable, pensionable salaries that are the ones that are subject to the 1.45. It, it would be your overtime and outside details along that. Going into insurance general. We are part of Maya. We are on year two of a two-and-a-half cap rate increase. And that would be, all of the things being held equal. If we'd added some machinery or what have you, that, those increases would be noted. This includes our police and, our police and fire accident. This is our property and casualty. This also goes through and provides us the union, short-term disability. Our drone coverage is in there. There is notary insurance. There's a dollar amount held out for public officials' bonds, expected unemployment claims, and there is a deductible. There is a $5,000 deductible for most claims. It was considered prudent to put a single deductible in there in the event it is, it is expected. Maturing debt, maturing debt interest, including the Webster-Dudley intermunicipal amount, principal, and interest. Part of the review had the DE1 with the source documents that went through and listed out sort of where they came from, where they were in the treasurer's budget, or they were part of the school assessment. Then we had the review of all of the maturing debt and the interest, sort of a bigger picture, and then individually. Right now, the debt that we have issued has a payment in, in the treasurer's budget. So if any additional, any additional debt is issued this fiscal year to be paid in the upcoming fiscal year, we would need to make arrangements for it. Little note here, Unibag Fiscal Advisory Services. We have the updated note schedule fees. It is expected we will file our continuing disclosure for a few thousand dollars in the event we need a, we need something from bond counsel that's not covered by proceeds from a borrowing or something similar like that. We would expect to pay some money for the issuance. Questions?
Questions from the board?
I had one or two more items, other than the Webster Dispatch Assessment. The OPEB expense. Right now, the town of Dudley has an OPEB account. Other post-employment benefits. Those are retiree health insurance obligations. We do two things. We have our valuation that goes through and identifies how much is due. And on the years that we are not having a full valuation, they provide an update. So we have a full valuation for one year, and then we have a following year where we go through and pay for an update before the next required valuation. This is the year we had the encumbrance of those funds from a previous year and paid the $6,100 to have that done. The reason it's being separated out is because your OPEB valuation and its costs are now identified in a budget line item. So if you're going through and identifying an indirect cost, there is a portion of that dollar amount that is funding the valuation to identify the water and sewer employees, or water sewer employees, the, one of the three, that would be separated out. Questions, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Mayard?
I'm good.
Anybody in the FAA with a question?
I just know, Mr. Chairman, that the Webster Dispatch, Webster Dispatch Assessment was shifted over to the municipal budget grouping that we went over previously. So that, we just moved on to Rich's budget and into that. We have in the notes section where it says actual estimated, a lot of the work with the finance team was to drill down and have everybody understand what Rich just went over tonight very quickly. We have the actual billing to show that those are actual costs that are pretty much beyond our ability to modify.
Can't change them. Can't be changed. Anybody in the crowd have a question?
Other than the follow-up for the apportioned debt on the field.
Yeah. Joe DeSantis said we'd also dig out that number.
I, we'll find it.
All right. But jail's down top of it.
Yeah, the school committee left. My apologies, I've just been a question of mine for a couple of years. When I saw it, I remembered, I remembered that question.
Excellent.
Wasn't worried about the $5,000.
No, no, I know you were looking at why it was saying it's going down, and I was a steady rate.
Yeah, and then I remember the portion that was coming from the community. Or not, so find that out.
All right. Thanks, Rich. Next up, Steve Watrowa, Chairman of the Planning Board, in the absence of a planner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Steve.
As you just said, I'm Steve Watrowa. I'm Chairman of the Dudley Planning Board. We do have an interim town planner now, but since I was already on the agenda, I figured I'd just take care of this one. I'm just here because the Planning Board decided that it would be a good idea for me to come and formally request that our budget be leveled, level-funded for this next year. So that's all I've got. Guess I got it on the record. Guess I'm done.
That's where we're at with that, right? Essentially, I don't know.
Level funding or decreases works for me.
Excellent.
All right. Thanks, Keith. Have a nice night.
Sorry I had to wait all night. We should let you go first. Next up, water sewer, George Petrinos.
I'd like to do the same thing he did, but I can't do that.
You can try.
Try. If you want to just, we'll run through this real quick. Start with the water budget. Right now, as you see, we're standardized with the contract obligations with the union and with the board for our personnel, administrator myself, and our employees. Our standby time right now has taken a little bit of a reduction. Standby is when people are on duty for the weekend, things like that during the week, answer calls. And as it applies with the overtime, we've had a significant decrease in some of that due to the fact that we've tweaked a lot of the alarms, problems at the stations, things like that with the new treatment plan. We were way up there before, and now we've come down a lot. So we're hoping to keep it at that number. So the overtime, we're going to think it's going to be pretty, pretty on mark with that. Going down to differential pay, that's standardized through the board anyway. That's like the money we used for like for the highway or something like that. And that's not used that much. Sick time buyback, we're going to be keeping that about where it is. Electric and gas, gas, electric has come down a little bit through a special program with the town, through the town administrator and our, one of our commissioners who's organized with that. It's a, I believe it's a contract price on that. Cell phone and SCADA, we're going to be dropping that too because initially, we used a lot of that for the systems and the stations for the alarming cellphone alerts for the individuals who carry our cellphones that answer the calls through that. We've got that pretty well done, so we've been able to knock that down a little bit there. So that's, that's a good thing. Metering also has stayed about the same. Nothing's changed there. Longevity, basic up a little bit. But I was the last one, and we got another one coming up for some longevity now. So be prepared for that. Reverse 911, that's the alert you guys get on your phones when there's a main break, and believe me, there's been a lot of them recently.
Didn't notice.
Sorry for bothering you. So we kept, we've kept that up a little bit, just for cost, for general increase in cost, things like that. I think that's an invaluable system. Chemicals, right now, we're going up a little bit on that because we're not, we're trying to go with the times as the increases occur. We're using that as a basic level right now, just keep it at 8%. We think that's about accurate where it should be, but sometimes we could get surprises with added costs on manufacturing and things like that. So we, I think we'll be okay. The GAC, that's the granulated activated carbon. That's at the media, that's the material that's in these giant tanks that you see in the station, well, not all the stations, that you used to see out on the Schofield Ave. Before, we were anticipating a lot more expense with that, but right now, after going through the last couple of years with it, we're pretty confident that the cost for that's going to be a lot more reduced. So I think we're pretty much on the ball with that. Indirect cost, that's reduced down a little bit. That's been worked on with some, some of the commissioners and the town officials. So I'll leave it right where it is. Retirement.
Sorry, George. We're meeting, the finance team is meeting with Abrahams, who did this study for the indirects tomorrow morning, just to dig down further to see what the, how those costs actually decreased. So we'll, for now, we're putting it in for you as a placeholder into their budget.
So that's the process?
We know they voted on it, but for our purposes, on the general fund side, we'll leave that as a placeholder until we can better report out to the board and the FAA as to what methodology was used to come up with a decrease.
So that's the process we agreed upon, George, last year, right? The town administrator, the treasurer, we brought in the Abrams group to.
Yeah, they had their meetings on it. They came up with a, what they, what the Abrams group recommended, and then they went back and forth. So I guess there's some more tweaking that they want to do on some things, but that's what it is right, right about the moment right now. So operating expenses, we're going to be keeping it right where it is right now. We think we'll be okay. That's subject to change, though, with anything else around the world getting more expensive. We're just waiting to see what happens there. Educational licenses stays the same. That's just your people getting their TCHs for accreditation to keep their licenses renewed and keep them, keep their credits up. And that's coming up again this next year. So we'll be, we'll be having more people go for their, for their credits. Sampling, we went down a little bit. We were doing an extreme amount of PFAS sampling with the new plant. Now that's come down to a few a month. And we still do quarterly sampling, and we do bacteria sampling once a month, too. So we think we're pretty comfortable with that figure there. Insurance, pretty much what it is right there, a little bit of an increase. Gasoline has come down a little bit. We were doing a lot of running around a little bit before, but we seem to be leveling off on that. So that's pretty good. Group health, that's pretty much standardized right there with Medicaid tax. Leak detection is a program we have once a year to go out and scout the town with specialized equipment to see if we have any type of leak brewing or actually, in fact, hydrants leaking, faucets, what have you, main, possible main breaks starting up. So that's, that's required by the state, too. So we keep that basically with the level it's at.
George, how do you find that work? Is that a good program for you guys?
What's that, the?
Leak detection?
Yes. It's a must. Before, you remember in the days, we were out digging almost twice a day because the leak detector guy go out, find 30 leaks, 30, 30 services leaking, whatever like that. We'd do that in about two weeks. He'd come back amazed that we're asking for more, go back out again, find another 30 or 40. Sometimes we'd go along, and the leaks got worse because the pressures got better. So it started popping more. But now it's different. It's, they're pretty much all buttoned up right now. So the system's gone through a very good, very good program with that. Safety, we're, we've dropped that a bit. We've already had some safety equipment, safety courses, things like that that we did. Right now, we're just going to be moderate, moderate with that going through for the next year or so to add a few things here and there. We think we're pretty well right up to state levels where we should be. You never can please the state, but we're close, we think. So we can only hope for the best there. Engineering, right now, there's a project coming up. The main engineering that we've done for the projects that we've had are complete, but they're going to be doing some added engineering for the problems with pressures like around Bates Road, Hall Road, where it's very low. And that's not by us, that's just by when the system was built. So we're going to be, and the DEP's requiring us to do a program with that through the engineers to develop a program or a plan of attack, how to deal with that. But that's down the road. We're working it step by step by step, which is a long, it's a long process. Capital, pretty much right now, down a little bit. The only thing we're coming online, we'd like to add some new equipment to the system. We're looking at some four-large pressure hydrants to regulate pressures in certain areas and activate at certain times to, to alleviate and help flush system. Some areas need a lot of flushing, and we can't do that all the time. So we're going to try to see if we can help that along a little bit with that. Debt service is pretty straightforward. That's pretty much our loans and things like that that we have out there right now. So sewer, not as, not as, not as big with, sorry, from the water. Same basic thing with the personnel, myself, the administrative assistant with the union contracts and, and the commissioners for the, for the increases. Medicaid tax, group health insurance, same thing. But overtime is a lot less on the sewer side. One employee was, we were down an employee for a good long time, so there was only one employee actually on the standby and on the overtime for sewer. The calls were very, were dropped a lot. We put a lot of money into fixing the system. So the calls were, started to diminish from there. You know, pump squad, things like that. All that was, were changed over, stations were changed over. Right now, even the alarm systems have been added that weren't working before. So that, that's given us some good headway right there. Sick time buyback, the basic stuff. Standby, like I said, been at a little bit level right there. Differential pace, standard. Webster Processing, the board of commissioners went before Webster's board, and they had their meetings for the last year or so. And they came up right now with their tentative plan of what our costs will be going over there. And I'm sure down the line, you're going to see added costs because of certain things they're going to end up doing over there. Like PFAS is going to be a big problem for any sewer department or sewer process. Like PFAS is going to be a big problem for any sewer department or sewer processing. They're going to require certain things to happen there. That's going to be money. Anything, something is used that Dudley contributes to, is also charged to us. So there are going to be some significant increases on that as we go along, just so everybody knows. Electrical, down a little bit. That's the efficiencies and some of the stuff that we've changed and done, so that's good. We're keeping on that, and also the program is helping us there. Communications, right now, is basically just about where it should be. There's not a lot in the sewer except for we use our mission systems. We may be moving that over to SCADA, cellphone services type thing, to alert if there's a problem in the stations. Longevity, same thing as the water. Fuel is basically down a little bit. Like I said, there was only one person for quite a long time, so the fuel to the truck wasn't going that much. Water pump was basically helping out a lot with the sewer. So that kept things down and costs down. They don't do a whole lot of traveling like the water department does. Indirects, like I said, that's under control. Retirement, that's from, we've just had a recent retiree, so we've got that pretty well held right where it is. Operating expenses, like I said, that's about where it should be. There's been no significant increases with that. But that's always to change a little bit here and there, depending on what we end up coming up with. Education licenses is not as much as the water. The sewer, new sewer personnel are required to go get their licenses for water, for the T1, D1, too, so they can help out in the stations at the water department, things like that. And their help isn't valuable, too. We just don't have enough personnel to do what we need to do. So they're always coming over to help us like we go over and help them. So I think that's a good thing there. Safety in there, same basic thing as the water department, but it's, they need more over there, and we're working on that now. A lot of equipment's been changed and made more safer. A lot of stuff has been down, a lot of stuff has been broken, a lot of stuff has not worked right. So we've completely fixed a lot of that stuff right now. So when they go out and you see them out in the street, you're going to see them, and they're going to be, like I said, they'll be jetting a lot more now, doing things they need to do, and they'll be at least safe doing it, not have to worry about traffic or anything like that. The engineering side of things is going to be involving itself in the INI programs more, infiltration, inflow infiltration. We have a lot of it still in town. A lot of it's being sectioned down here towards the Jericho area. We've just found another area that's coming in down one of our pump stations that we have to address because it's causing the pump station to constantly work. We think that's one of the major contributing factors of some of these releases in the street you see for the SSO releases. We've lined a lot of the wet list in pot side of town, west of the fire station, that area up north, west of that, towards the Connecticut side. And it's paid off a lot there, but there's still more to go over here. So before we go going with any other big projects to fix things, we're going to end up taking care of what we can see, what we can fix right away, what we can locate any more infiltration towards the French River area, where we are finding some problems there. Manhole's getting underwater, things like that. So you'll see that more in engineering. Assurances, basically down a little bit on that. Metering, same thing with the water, keep it about the same. INI is the new, like I said, that's new now as a line item. That's going to be some of our big concentrations is INI. So we've left 20,000 for that, to keep that with a little cushion there, because we'll be using a lot of that coming up. And the debt services, things like that, is down a little bit there. So not a bad situation, but a lot of work, still more to be done.
Well, George, I have a question, two questions. You said PFAS with the sewer problem now, and how would that be addressed at the plant? Is that going to be addressed through a intermunicipal agreement?
Like we mediate PFAS here, they're going to have to start meeting it. I don't remember, years ago, when we first got into this PFAS, we were doing a sewer project, sewer break down on Canyon Road, right where this new thing is happening. Right away, we got into big trouble with help because they said COVID was in the sewer. That hasn't changed. But, I mean, now with medications and things, yeah. But the problem is, is PFAS is now the same kind of thing. They have to mediate this at the sewer plant.
Right.
In order to do that, you need specialized equipment, you need a granular, you need whatever method that they choose to use. And of course, if we contribute our sewer to the sewer plant, we're going to be put onto some of that charge, too.
So how would that, is that cost going to be borne as part of the intermunicipal agreement we have with them? We own 17%, right? So.
I would assume it would come basically starting on that unless there's a way they can negotiate something down the line. That hasn't come to par yet. That's just on the horizon. We're trying to be proactive on the horizon. We see more things, and you know, it's hard to explain all, but some of these things, they call that Dudley and Webster joining together, whether it be equipment or this or that, oh yeah, you have to share the costs of that. So they're trying to make sure that we're not getting on the short end of the deal, whatever it is that we need to owe them, we owe them, that kind of thing, and we prepare for any future expansion or modification of their plant.
Okay, and then my question on the water side, I maybe should have stopped you at the time, but you talked about the overtime, and at one point, you only had one person, lead operator or primary operator?
Just call it plan operator.
So at that time, I think Scott might have been, somebody was here one night, and there was other people getting trained up. Is that also contributing to reduction in overtime, or is it just spreading out?
At that time, the overtime before was a little bit up, but now that went down for the years coming, it's because of the equipment that we've changed over, pumps we've changed over. So the callouts don't come on as much. You're not getting that weekend calls or weekday calls that you'd get, that the pump is frozen up, that it's clogged up, things like that. That's helped immensely. So that's offset that a lot, too, right there. In the interim, while the guy was out for a while, we had the water department backing the sewer man up. So that was, their overtime was down because of that, because usually if two guys going out in the sewer, the water guy would cover that to help out or whatever. So that helped out there, overtime also. Water side was up a little bit before, alarm systems and calls started going down with the tweaking of the equipment and changing over some things, redirecting some things. So that's all come down. So an overall, general, all overtime is coming down to a basic level right now. You're still going to have overtime. Sometimes it could go up. Main breaks are happening big time right now. That's going to kind of put a little dent into some of that overtime. You know, that's unexpected, but for what we've done and fixed and updated, it's helped out a lot.
All right, and then I have a completely unrelated budget question from my former coworker, as they want to know when that little elbow on Oxford Ave is going to be fixed so they can get up to the mailbox instead of having to get out right next to, just past the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, we, right now, we have an extensive amount of asphalt, of paving to do, prepping and paving to do. We can't really do it yet until the plants open up, but with the help of the Highway Department and MJ, we're going to start working on that together, and then we'll have everybody together, spending the day doing as much as we can get done to get everything finished off.
Because it's going to take a little bump right now.
I know, I know. Well, we had to make something there because of the fact is it was, we had that major rainstorm come, and it was bad enough washing into the guy's driveway and other things, so I wanted to avoid that, which it did. And the highway was nice enough to come up and sweep that whole street for us, so that worked out good.
I just, I told him I'd ask.
No, no, I talked to him, I talked to him the other day anyways. Thank you.
Any questions for George?
Just want to note that your budget for water declined, decreased by 14%. Good.
Is that going to, I'll ask Scott, is that going to reflect in the rates or no?
I'm not going to answer that question right now.
We talked about it before, things went down, the rates went.
We're hoping for the best on everything, that's all I can say, we're hoping for the best. We're working hard at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
We have a public hearing on Wednesday in this room to discuss rates. And just for awareness, the joking around that happened last week caused significant heartache with the social media crowd. They hear that stuff, they act on it, and they speak on it, and it just, it makes our job a whole lot more difficult. So joking around about the rates is just inappropriate.
Well, my question was serious. You had said a year or so ago, the rates had gone up a couple of years ago, double-digit, then they went up the next year. You sat there, this is serious now, you sat here and said, if costs go down, we could adjust the rates.
That's correct.
So I asked you at the time, I'm not done yet, Scott, I'm almost done, let me finish, please. I asked you at that time, would the rates go down to the level they were raised the year before, or would they go down to where they were raised two years before? And you said, paraphrasing, it would depend on our revenues, if we get grant funding, if we're the indirect cost. So now we're looking at a 14%, and I get it, the question's probably better for tomorrow night, but it was, it was said with a laugh with George just now, but that's a serious question based on information you provided about a year and a half to two years ago.
And we'll discuss that on Wednesday, but we'll come to a, I pay the same rates as everyone else, so if, and I'll say the same thing I said back then. If I can vote to decrease rates, I will vote to decrease rates, but I will do it in a smart, financially prudent manner.
And I feel bad with the social media angst, but there's nobody, there's no board, and there's no person in town that gets more social media angst than the board of selectmen in the town administrator's office, so.
It's just, it's not a joke. We take it seriously.
Well, as you can see, they don't come to the meetings and ask questions in person, so we've invited individual people that post what's probably inaccurate information. Mr. Johnson was chair several years ago.
Absolutely.
So we get it, too.
We raise, we study rates once a year in April, and we make decisions to go into effect in July with the start of the new fiscal year. That's the way we've been doing it for five, seven, eight years, and that's the way we'll continue to do it. But we'll look at revenues, we'll look at expenses, and we'll make the best decision we can make for our payers.
So years ago, we did, three years ago, I think it was, we did a study about a DPW, and it was recommended by that study, that professional group to go to DPW, and you guys voted against it. Is that ever going to come up for consideration again, or is that, that concept gone?
I can only speak for myself. I will always vote against it. I think we have a good system here. There are savings that can be had with a DPW, but there are also things that happen in that that I'm just not in favor of. That's a personal thing?
Personal, but also your opinion as a commissioner.
That's my opinion as a commissioner, that's correct.
Right, well, just, I know we, I know our board, myself in particular, I tend to follow what the professionals recommend. That was a directed study to that purpose, and it came back as a paraphrasing, it was, I don't say no brainer because that'd probably offend somebody, but it was a no brainer. Any other questions? Thank you, Scott. COA, another one. We should have let you go before, I apologize, you've been here all night.
So I'm just looking to get back our budget that we had before, the $10,000 that we've had. We didn't have that this year, so I'm hoping to get that back.
Mr. Ruda.
I'd love to give her $100,000 if I could, and the COA is almost, is 100% state grant funded. In the past, we've had a $10,000 line item for additional programs and those sort of things, and over the past year or two, we've had to take it out in order to balance the budget, and she, and Mrs. Johnson's asking to put it back in for the next fiscal year, so I hope we can appeal to consider that.
So as it stands, it's in there at 10?
It's in there at 10. We're restoring a past line item that was also in there at 10.
Try and.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Building.
I can speak to that one.
Mr. Ruda.
The increase, the primary increase in building department is the salary of the inspector. He's classified as a grade four. This brings him up into, based on the hours he works, brings him up into the grade four category. So it's a market rate adjustment that we've been unable to do over the past several years. So that is the, that's the primary increase in that budget.
It says zero for admin, but that's because it's a shared cost.
Admin, admin actually appears, no, admin assistant actually appears under my budget, administrative assistant, so it's, yeah, it's a shared cost.
Yeah, three departments.
Board of Health, Building and Zoning.
Correct. Any questions for the administrator?
Mr. Chair, printing and supplies. I thought we had moved all of the printing and supplies to the administrative budget.
We had, but they buy certain things like permit, like the color of the paper for permits and that, those sort of things are distinct to that office, so it didn't.
Didn't make sense to move by.
Didn't make sense to me.
Any other questions from the crowd? Hearing none. Except the presentation, thank you. Next, we have account, we're on accounting? Board of Health, sorry, Board of Health.
Getting there was so close.
Hello, Roberta Johnson, Jonathan Pass, Board of Health Chair. So this year's budget to next year's looks like it'll go down. However, I just wanted to point out some things that were new for next year. Up until this year, Webster paid for our water testing at the beach. That person has retired, so we have to take on that bill ourselves. So that's why we have water beach testing on ours, which normally we don't have to pay for. So we had to research that. This year, we're out of the IMA grant with the other towns, and normally our Board of Health software is covered under that, but because we're not in it, we had to pay for it this year. Looks, we're hoping to be back into it for next year, which why it says zero, but if we are not accepted back in it, it might be added into it, but right now, we left it at zero because we're very close to getting a health nurse, which is what we need to get in order to get back into that group. So everything else, the health agents' salaries stay the same, everything else seems to be where we need it to be.
So Roberta, is the software grant, like obviously it's not a revolving grant because you have to reapply for it, but.
Right. It's covered when we're in that group, but because we're not in it this year, we had to pay for it.
Is there a reason why we're out?
Lot of reasons, yes. We could talk about that another time. I don't hold up the night any longer, but, yeah.
Any questions for Board of Health? FAA? Mike, I keep forgetting to ask, are you all set? Just speak up if you're not.
I'm all set.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add the cost of beach testing back into my recommendation when it comes up, and it's a health issue we'll have to address.
Next up, Town Accounting, Sarah Margot. That's fine.
Because I can't see.
Join the club.
Have a nice small budget. The salary looks a little off, and that's, that has to do with the timing issue. When I was brought on board last year, I came in as assistant, and Deb left in August, so the numbers look a little off. But other than that, pretty much staying flat right down the line. I'm holding software support, and what that is, is a contract with Eric Kinchoff, who is supporting me as we look at VEDA and making sure the background and we're optimizing the functionality within that system. So other than that, just normal.
Any questions for the account? FAA?
No.
Why, come on. Should have let all these other smaller ones go first.
So just to further clarify, the salary looks a little off because, in case anybody inherits, she was paid from the assistant because we had two accountants technically for a month or six weeks. And the increase that would be proposed in her salary is not included in the merit pay line item in the other budget, so it's all, that salary number is accurate for FY26.
Excellent. Thank you, Sarah. DSO, Steve Rogerson. Hi, Steve.
Hi. Good evening, Chairman, Board of Selectmen.
You got the floor.
I met with the accountant last Monday, went through all the numbers. I recommended that we don't really change the line item for the veterans' benefits, you know, under Mass General Law Chapter. under Mass General Law, Chapter 115, keep it at 150. Even though we are way under, we're going to be under by, by July comes, the way it's forecasted. We're not seeing such an uptick in the town of Dudley with veterans. People coming to see me, but they're not, they're not qualified as of yet. I did forward an email to both Town Administrators, because I represent Webster and Dudley, and to the accountants, to let them know what the state's doing. The state's sending, putting on social media and sending emails to the veteran population. Pretty much motivating them to come see the veterans' offices, to put in the benefits. And I've talked to Selectman Mark Landry about this in the past. And it's, it's creating some, you know, a lot of people think they're going to get the, the qualif- these benefits when they're not, because it's basically being indigent. There is federal claim work I do. I'm one of two VA-created veterans' offices in Worcester County out of 71 towns. So I'm, I'm getting some of that. And they may or may not qualify. But the Chapter 115 program with state benefits, I mean, they're really pushing hard to try to get that coming. So that's, that's the one issue that I'm really dealing with right now, just trying to handle the workload. Because if someone comes to my office, it, it takes like two hours. That's a lot of time to spend with individuals. And of course, not everybody's applying, but the ones that do come, it takes a lot of time and patience. Some of them at a different level in society, so you're going to spend extra time with them. So as far as, I don't know if you want me to go through every line item here, or do you have some specific questions? There much, there's not much difference from the way it's been with the town of Dudley.
We have someone's got a specific question, but it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
This is going to be a shared service, continued shared service with Webster with a 60-40 split. I, I know Steve is up for reappointment, which happens to, has to happen before the end of April. So it'll be on one of our two next meetings, and we'll give him a heads up to make sure that.
Yeah, we'll get that done, I know it's coming up.
So that wasn't been done yet? Because I had sent an email out to both Town Administrators. I was on the impression the IMA was already done.
It is done.
But your actual appointment is done.
We've, we've got to get it signed, but it's. Of course, yeah.
It's as good as done.
Yeah, I spoke to Olivia earlier about that, if we can do the same tonight, but she wanted to wait because of how busy we are, as you can see, how late it is and everything.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, we'll get it.
Sir?
We're not going to, we're not going to leave you.
Okay.
You had to stay up for all that time.
Yeah, sorry. Hang on, we should've let you go, another one we should've let go earlier.
Made more of the flashpoint.
All right. Any questions from the crowd? All right, thanks, Steve.
Okay, no question FAA, you know, you happy with me?
Happy with you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Next on the agenda, Harper's Payroll Implementation Update Deadline, Janet Deshane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, just to go over real quickly, we had issued, I say we. Mr. Ruda had issued and, or put together a, let me make sure I can find it. An action plan for the different things that were included in the DLS report. And number 10 on that action plan was prioritizing the Harper's Payroll self-service implementation. So just as a brief understanding, if, because we haven't talked about it in a while. The overall goal of the project, to my understanding, is to take the town from a paper payroll process with timesheets that are on paper and faxed over and input manually with department heads trying to keep track of vacation time and other accrued time that employees are, are eligible for. So it's kind of led to a couple of inefficiencies here and there. The last, like, so anyway, for the, the action plan that was issued, the first deadline that we had coming up was to finalize the requirements and identify and confirm the remaining items needed to activate Harper's Payroll self-service features. We were hoping to get that done by March 31st. Fortunately, it doesn't seem like we've had any contact that I'm aware of with Harper's directly since November, beginning of December. And that was when the police department finished their testing of the system and kind of reporting back some of the pain points that they were seeing, some things that needed to be updated. So on the 31st, I, Sarah was kind enough to like book a conference room for herself and Rich and I to sit down, just to go over some of the, the original objectives for the project, what some of the obstacles have been, to kind of outline the current process and identify like areas of risk, other places that we can kind of, you know, use this new tool to shore up some inefficiencies and to outline next steps. You know, during that meeting, I found out that there was a period of time where we had to, again, I say we, because it's, it's a team effort, but really Danielle and Rich had to switch coding over from one system, like one job, like a code, to a job code that we're actually using. So that was kind of a heavy lift earlier on. It seems like that's been done, and then we obviously moved forward with some testing, but there just hasn't been any additional movement since then that, that I was able to see. So I came away with like a couple of additional questions that we're going to need to go to our Harper's Project Lead. And I reached out to him on Thursday. Haven't heard back yet. I did follow up again today. And the main thing that I asked for was just a, a project list, a project schedule, what's been completed, what's still outstanding, what they need us to do. Again, having not heard back from the actual vendor, and this is supposed to be an active project, is really discouraging. And I don't think that that's necessarily on anyone from the town, but it's, it's a little nerve wracking to me, considering that like we want to try to get the testing and configuration done by May 31st. And, and I know this is a really busy time for a lot of people. It's part of the reason that I set up the meeting with Sarah and Rich, because I figured, you know, Olivia and John are out straight, trying to do budget things and coordinating with different departments. More hands make light work, that kind of thing. And it's just not hearing back from Harper's, and that's unfortunate. So that's kind of where we're at right now, is I'm, I'm trying to get in touch with the vendor to figure out exactly what they have us listed as having been done and what scheduling needs to be done at this point. Like, I had asked for a Gantt chart and just silence. I haven't seen one yet. So I don't know if it's hiding somewhere, like in our OneDrive, or if it was issued to a different department. But again, like, I still haven't seen a project plan in writing.
So, one sec, Rich. So is that unusual, that we don't get a response from Harper four days? Well, through the weekend, I would.
It's not unusual at all. As a matter of fact, we get momentum, and then it mysteriously stops for weeks on end. And then we finally rein it back in, and then it mysteriously stops, and that's been a four-year project. So I'm literally at the point now where I can't make any headway as Town Administrator. I've asked the Board of Selectmen to step in and, and kind of drive the process, because I just don't have the authority to move anything. Even if that includes going out to bin and dumping Harper's, because I've had it. It's been almost close to five years now. All the department heads have wasted their time going through the process. We've had in-person trainings with Harper's in this room, with department heads, and we just cannot seem to make any headway with it. So before I fall down and fail, or this continues, we've got to either pull the plug on it or get the executive board involved to, to move the project along.
All right, Rich?
Good evening. If I could get back to the, the Gantt chart or the lead on it. I don't believe there is one. I think there is an idea that's trying to move forward. I spoke with someone from Harper's last week, and I spoke with one of the people at Vadar. Moving this project forward is good. It is a positive thing. It's more than the elimination of paper. It's to integrate a payroll system that has a check and balance, that goes through and has the import and export. Thank you for the compliment, that a lot of the heavy list, lift has already been done. I think there is still a bit more to do, and this is a very busy time to do it. If the board is looking for a return where there is a project manager, and it shouldn't be on that side, I've already done a great deal of the work, as well as my assistant. This, these are the two people who should be driving things forward. The return that comes back the day after payroll, that goes right up into Vadar, is good. The presentation that I saw for the first time last week is even better. You get into a HUMUS compliant chart of accounts that sort of dovetails into your budgeting process. You're not adding up what the sergeants earned last year. It is a coding process. It's, it is a good thing to do. I couldn't speak to why someone is contacting you or not contacting you. I was at an educational seminar where both of those vendors were there. They were familiar to me, and we had our discussion about how do you get these things to work? Okay? And I was encouraged to follow up, yes, don't worry, we can do this. So I think the focus needs to be a little bit different. The people who've moved this forward should be the ones moving it forward. If there's concerns from the Board of Selectmen that this is what it looks like, then of course, there should be feedback on it. To, to get it done in a month and a half is, is only done at the expense of something else. There's that much going on. If it's done on the 31st, June 30th, or July 31st, the, the number one concern is, should it be correct? That's, that's how I'm viewing it. I, I was the person that made the original telephone call in 2019 to start this process. And we are here, and we've had, Mr. Sullivan took time, Mr. Shane came in as well. So there's validity to the process. It just needs to be done right. To try to get it done in 48 hours or in a rushed period of time is, is the wrong move.
So I, sorry, through the chair. I, I guess that's part of my concern, is that it is a very busy time. And if what we're trying to do is get other departments to do the training, then maybe that isn't something that should be managed by the technical side of it, which it sounds like was your department, is your department. Obviously, you need to be involved. I'm a little upset to hear that you spoke to somebody at Harper's last week and didn't think to fill me in after having a meeting where I said that I was going to take over for John and Olivia. And if this is a team effort, you need to loop in everybody who's working on it.
It was a discussion at an in-person event to make sure that this worked. No one was excluded for any, from anything. I'm standing here trying to tell you how I would approach the effectuation of this plan.
Okay.
So I, I, there, there's, there's no emails, no one was included in. It was a matter of a presentation and the conversation.
So the presentation was not delivered to you, it was at a summit that you were already at?
Yep.
Okay. And you didn't receive any notes or anything from that, that you could forward along to the rest of the people trying to do the implementation on the town side?
And the slides that were returned from the people at Vadar did not include that, but I asked for it when they didn't come in, and the email sent after four o'clock. If they show up, certainly, I'd be more than happy to share it. Again, it's, it's my intention to do this correctly, and the board will look at it and say, hopefully, yes, this is what we had planned, or maybe it's more than was planned. As I presented my budget, part of the interface is part of, of Vadar module that we don't have in place today. I didn't know that until last week. It was a Thursday meeting. So you have a department head telling you, this is how I plan to get this done. I'm telling you the timeframe is tight. The exchange that we have now is good, it could be better, and I'm hoping to deliver that.
So my, my question would be, I asked this question over a year ago, I think. I'll update the question to now, but I had no idea, you said, why are we not implementing that Vadar module? How come nobody knew that that Vadar module? It sounds like nobody knew it existed. Why is it, why?
Part of the educational process that is sponsored by Vadar is, here's their rollout. And they invited one of their vendors, co-branding. There's, there's a reason Breyer's Ice Cream has Reese's Pieces in it. You have two people who have a substantial part of the marketplace going forward saying, there's a partnership potentially there. It is the more recent version of it, and I asked, how can Dudley work on this? If you'd have asked me three weeks ago, I, I would have been speculating on what the next project rollout was.
I'm just, I don't know, maybe it's just, I don't, I don't understand Vadar, I freely admit that. I'm, I know, again, I asked a question in the past, Mr. Landry was involved with the previous accountant. And at one point, I thought we were sure that all the modules were either up and running or they were in the process by words. But I'm also, a little bit of angst too, is about two or three months ago, there was some email exchange where we wanted Harper's up by the end of March. That was an aggressive timeline, you said. So now we've moved it out since then, two more months, and it's still an aggressive timeline. So I don't get, I guess the question would be, what would you think is a, I'm trying to think of the right word, not moderate time, what would be a appropriate timeline? You would, because now we're going to be getting into summer vacations, people are going to be gone. We've got the audit coming up. And prep for the town meeting, and then we're going to have to prep for the fall town meeting. I mean, what, I, I.
You're, you're asking me to defend my week and, and the hours that I put in?
No, I am not, no, I am not. I'm asking.
That's, that's, that's exactly what it is.
No, it's not, Rich, I asked.
You know, the, the, the priority has been, what used to be a 45-minute or one-hour financial team meeting has extended beyond that, and rightfully so, because you need to get your budgeted items taken care of prior to a certain point. So it's a matter of prioritization. And again, I'm, I'm here telling you that I agree with you that this is something important. I can't have, I can't make it yesterday. I'm telling you what I think I can do. And.
So again, I, I don't want you to feel like I'm questioning your time. I am not questioning your time. I, I come here enough that I see your van, I know when you're here, not, not all the time, I'm not looking. You drive by, I'm in your way, and I'm like, oh, pretty long day. So I, I get it, it's not, it's not a question of your time. It was a question of what do you think is a timeline?
On, on a module that I, I saw a blank demo of, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Well, that's Vadar, we're talking about Harper, like the Harper rollout that Janet just discussed. Couple, two or three months ago, we talked about the end of March.
Right.
And that was aggressive. And now we're talking the end of May, and it's, it's not even April 7th. And what I'm getting from you is you think that's aggressive. And as Janet said, that was a great saying, I never heard that before. More hands, less work, or light work.
Yeah. Many hands make light work.
And I think Sarah's going to get up, and she's been very frank, and she's mentioned more than once that you guys are cooperating very well, the numbers.
Absolutely, because after we had our meeting last week, it was, please come down and see all of the coding that's gone on. And I was told I didn't explain it well enough, that there was a great deal of, of work that had been done behind the scenes so that we could have something worthwhile. Let me get to the, a rollout meeting where, or put together something for, this is what the new module looks like, this is what it, what it takes, approximate hours time. I know enough people at Harper's to be able to get something, at least a meeting, or I'm, I'm hoping I can. I, you, I don't want to speak for a third party, but I'm, again, I'm here telling you that, yes, there's a plan. I plan on leading it, I plan on having my assistant and the gentleman who does the payroll as well go through and be part of this, so that when the rollout comes, much like when we did the receipts. we did the receipts, we had our roll-up, rollout, and one by one, we had that live-first walkthrough so that we don't have a Monday afternoon in a panic mode because what we had planned to have go live didn't work well.
So are you talking the VEDAR module now, or are you talking Harper's? Or is it a combination?
It's the integration, that's the reason you're doing this. You're hoping to go through and have the elimination of paper, but it's not a flat import. You want to be able to go through and say, hi, treasurer's salary, okay, here's the dollar amount, we're going to have that in, and it cannot be exceeded. It was a technical conversation, saying, how do we go through and make sure that these things are in place so that we can still have the accountant go through and have an approved payroll, as opposed to trying to back into a payroll number? And again...
Does a department have, does a department head have the ability to access Harper's to see his or her's own department input of salaries, or, maybe I'm phrasing the question wrong, somebody, maybe you can help me, you know? If I'm building in grounds, and I'm superintendent, because we don't have one, that's why I'm saying that, we have MJ, but I have the ability on Harper's to go in and verify the information. As you just said, you don't want to have a Monday meltdown on payroll.
Yes.
So does a department head have the ability to access Harper's, which is our payroll system that we started in 2019, somebody said? Have that ability to do that work?
In the employee self-service module, you'd have a department head in charge of however many employees, and the employee would not be the one modifying any of the rates, everything would be pre-populated. It's a matter of making sure that the payroll module is up to date, so that you'd have to start putting in different cutoffs. You'd want to make sure that any and all payroll changes would be done by noon time so that when you opened the module up and closed out your week, you would have, for the week of, you would have, Rich Carmanian's assistant went from $10 an hour to $11 an hour. Whatever changes would be there, new employee being put in, you wouldn't be able to go through, and you would want to eliminate the amount of work that you did on the day of the payroll, you'd want to get everything done prior to that.
So I guess I'm still not sure, does a department head have that access, where they can go in Harper's and input their payroll, or does it have to go to you to be inputted? And to take it a step further, with a non-supervisor employee, I'm probably going to use the wrong term, everyone knows I'm a dinosaur, would they have the ability to read-only Harper's? Like, could they look at it, type an employee ID number in and say, they can't change it now, I'm talking about just read it, they go on their computer, and they say, oh, I took six hours simply last week, and I guess the message didn't go through because I got paid for 40. They will go to their supervisor and say, can you...
That's how we believe the ESS works, employee self-service works, yes.
And that's through Harper's or VEDAR?
Through Harper's.
So they can do that now?
I'd have to run a completeness to see where things left off. There's, there should be a complete file that mirrors all of the contracts and ETFs in the Harper's module. So you would go through as of 7:01 and update your town administrator's salary. You'd be able to pre-populate that, I think you'd be able to time it and put it on the calendar to come in. You'd have to get your hands on it for me to tell you how it works specifically, but as you're describing it, it is the employee self-service in that there's a department head, and there would be the employees assigned being able to go through and do, to be able to look at their rate, put in their hours taken, and the supervisor to approve, pull it, and send it over. I'm, I'm, go ahead.
What is it, what they think?
Nobody should be able to modify anything outside of the module. If we get an ETF that says somebody goes from $10 to $11...
There's no problem, we're not even close to being able to do that, that's the whole point, Mr. Chairman.
But that's what I'm saying.
There's nobody going to modify anything in Harper's, because it doesn't, it's been, somebody asked a question earlier, and I'm sorry that I'm animated about this, but it's all falling on me at this point. Somebody asked a question, I think Mr. Shane's asked a question, what's a reasonable timeframe? I can tell you what an unreasonable timeframe is. It's almost five years, okay, since we've been working on this. So I'm not sure if we're confusing integration with VEDAR to getting Harper's up and running, but at this point, it's just not happening. And I think that to set a deadline that I'm responsible to work towards with no ability to move the project forward is why we're here right now, because there's no ability for me to move it forward.
Right, I'm going to recognize Kerry, but that was my question, are we discussing VEDAR functions that Rich said he just found out about, are we discussing lack of Harper? We discuss an integration? Again, I defer to you folks, you guys use this kind of stuff every day, Kerry.
Mr. May, I remember when this, before we even had this, as we all know, when Mr. May gets onto something, like whether it be solar or what have you, he really did a deep dive and went into the rabbit holes on this. I'm just wondering if he has anything to add. I don't mean to put you on the spot, Mike, but I know you know a little bit about this, just looking for your input if you have any.
Did he leave?
He didn't leave, did he?
Might have passed out.
If he comes back, I'll recognize the fire chief.
It's tax season, he's taking a nap. An involuntary...
I don't, I don't know, maybe somebody, maybe Rich can answer this question, but I know I went through a lot of the training. I have to have the ability to manually change rates, because I have special rates, I'm sure Merrick has the same problem. I couldn't do that in Harper's, I can do it now on my Excel sheet. Like, for instance, if the officer's out on that group, and I have another officer, the senior private is the acting officer, through the contract, he gets bottom-step lieutenant's pay, which is a difference of, for most people, $3.78 an hour. I take that $3.78 and manually input it into second ambulance pay, because that's just where it comes out of, because there's no individual line for shift lead, or my budget, if I had an account for everything, my budget would be three pages long, but anyway. So on the Excel sheet now, I can do that, where I just put in 12 hours at $3.78, and that additional money comes out of there. Through Harper's, I don't have that ability to do that.
So when you say Excel sheet, again...
The paper sheet.
Correct, that's what you send to Rich every week.
Right, and I change them any way I want, and...
But you don't...
Input what I need to input.
So I guess I'll ask you the question, as a department head, you don't have access to Harper's?
I do, to a certain extent, I can input hours and stuff, as of the way it is right now, but I can't change rates and things like that. But I should have that ability, I have that ability now, on the Excel sheet.
You do have the ability.
Okay, so that answers my question.
So you, so is that something you just...
But you know what I'm saying?
I understand. Am I asking the question the wrong way? I'll let Jana speak.
No, I was going to say, the last email that I saw was from Chief Harlowitz's training, that was the last thing that I had seen from, I think, the end of November. And based on that back and forth, it looked like, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were able to swap around the time to make sure that all of that was shaking out the way it was supposed to with your employees that had different rates.
Yes, so I think I did four test runs total, and every time I did a test run, there was always issues, whether the rate, whether time and a half wasn't put in there. So every time I did a test run, I would always email whoever was our rep, and give them like 10 points, you got to fix this, this, this. Then I did another test run, found three more mistakes. So I was working with them, I think the last email was, I think we worked out all the problems. It's just, if you don't do it for six months, you're going to forget it. So I'm pretty sure if I have to do Harper's again, or the lieutenant, or even Leslie, it's going to be challenging to do a test run, and then, you know, six months from now, are we going to be doing another test run? So I think we worked out a lot of stuff on the police side, which is very complicated payroll. It's not a 40-hour at one rate. Our officers work different rates, different details, different stipends, different steps, it's just, there's a lot. I think our department and the fire department's probably got the most complicated payroll system, so...
We have a similar problem, and I just don't want to run down to Rich.
So Chief, wait, Chief.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
I don't want to have to run down to him at nine o'clock on a Monday morning, because he's probably busy doing his own stuff, and I'm the last person he's going to want to see walking through the door, Rich, I need your help fixing this, this, and this. He's going to be like, I don't have time, and I don't blame him, but I want to be able to do this stuff on my own, and just come in and say, hey, my payroll's all set, and call it a day.
So Merrick, when you did, one second, then I'll get you. So when you did the training, again, I'm probably the wrong one to ask the questions, I'm going to ask it wrong. Did you have the ability, I'll call it the training mode, to go into Harper's and fix it yourself, or did you have to fix it on an Excel sheet, like the chief, and send that to Rich or Danielle, and they had to fix it?
So what I did is, when I did the test run, I figured out, what I did is, I took a payroll from our current system, and then I put everything into the Harper's, and then the bottom number didn't match what Harper's said, I would have to go back and individually figure out where the mistakes were, and then I would point that out to Boris or whoever was in charge from Harper's, give them the 10 points or 12 points, he would fix them, I would do another test run two, three weeks later, because it took them a while to get back to us, and then find more mistakes, and then fix those mistakes. It took, like I said, probably four test runs to get all the mistakes out. Now, if I run Harper's now, I'm pretty sure there's different rates that would have to be fixed, because some of the officers moved up in steps, some of the officers are no longer with us, and some new ones, so it's just...
So you couldn't fix it in Harper's, even in a test run, and then email or talk to Boris and say, I test ran, found 10 mistakes, I'm in Harper's, I fixed them myself, and this is what I fixed?
So you can override it. So there is an option in Harper's where, let's say, a sergeant got paid 15 bucks an hour, and I found that mistake, I could change it to what his actual rate was, override it manually, but that would never fix the problem, because it's...
Which would happen again.
Would happen again. And then I would email whoever from Harper and tell them, hey, I got my numbers to match Harper's, but here's the mistakes you got to fix. And then following test run, the same thing, the same thing. He would fix them, it would just take a while to get back and forth.
All right, Jay, sorry.
I feel like the rabbit hole we're going down right now, isn't that we need a tight project plan and people to put the appropriate amount of time and effort into doing the task to get it done, and we're going down a rabbit hole about, is some tasks more difficult than others that require good standard work once, it sounds like the test scripts were able to be run and completed. So good standard of work allows you to go back after six months, but the fact that we should be talking about is, the project plan shouldn't be six months in between test scripts, so...
I wasn't involved in any of the test runs. Excuse me for interrupting. I wasn't part of any of this. The test runs were done separate from my office.
Which brings back to Rich's point, the project plan would have all the actions down, the responsible parties, good communication between those parties, at least weekly update meetings to ensure that everyone's meeting their goals, and that's what the project manager should be doing.
And that's the piece that I was trying to get across, like every software implementation or project that I've been on, not every single person that's on the project has to be involved every single step of the way. And your project manager is the one saving your time and trying to make sure that you're able to meet the day-to-day priorities, because this isn't the only project that you're on. And specifically, like, I know that we're worried about competing priorities. I know that there are other things that are more important that need to be done from your offices, but this is also a priority. And if you need to offload the scheduling to somebody else who is sitting in a meeting saying, let me do the scheduling, and working with these vendors, I'm not planning on, again, boxing anybody out. That was never my intent in sitting down, it was just to try to make sure that someone had time to reach out to the vendor multiple times a week to say, are we on schedule for the next thing? Are we on schedule for the next thing? Like, I just, I cannot imagine being on an active project and not hearing from your project lead about what the next step is for more than three days. I mean, I know that the vendor I reached out to has not had a, doesn't know who I am from Adam, I get that. And maybe it takes a little more time to like vet who's emailing you and all of that. But it's part of the reason that I included everyone who's been on this project so far on that email, saying, hey, this is who I am. I'm trying to figure out how to get this installed, how do we move this forward? And I want to start with like a concrete project plan, because again, I just don't see that anybody has received one yet.
And I've offered the return of it, between me and the assistant, to come back saying, I have a good idea of what I know today, I saw new items, please allow me to speak and work with the vendor and tell you what I don't know.
Sure, I mean, you should be able to do that, but that's, again, still in a team setting. It's not a one-on-one conversation between any of us and the vendor. Because it's not a project that is just impacting you and James and Danielle, it's impacting the whole town, and it's an initiative that the Board of Selectmen is trying to take up based on this DLS report. I mean, obviously, it's been under, it's been in the works prior to me ever being on the board, so it just, I, most of these companies like to see an implementation in about eight months. The fact that it's going on three solid years of work is...
And Mr. Chairman, through the chair, I think part of the issue is, the vendor also has to know who the heck is in charge of the project. It's hard enough that we are not getting any response from the vendor, but the vendor doesn't know who the hell they're dealing with. If we're not having the same conversation, and we're not representing who has the ultimate last authority decision-making ability, how do you get anything implemented? How do you, how do you have someone call and say, the police chief worked on his, doing his entries, and we got no response from you? Right? You didn't respond to him for four weeks, or whatever the timeline was. What are we doing about it? Are we fixing it, or are we going to have to retrain the chief, who's going to have to retrain the lieutenant, who's going to have to retrain the assistant, the administrative assistant, to do another entry, and then wait four weeks for a response from the vendor? And to tie up Rich, well, an administrative assistant figures out how to do data entry into an online reporting system is absurd. You're not going to involve Rich in something that's supposed to be done at the employee, the basic employee level either.
Right.
I mean, I think that's why we need the authority of the Board of Selectmen to come in and say, oh, there's a decision to be made, here it is, what's next? Oh, you're not responding? Guess what, we're going, we're going to go somewhere else with it. There's no, there's no authority over the project that's been identified.
If I can just add to that, so I was told to work with Boris, try to work out the issues, I did. And then on November 20th, after my fourth run, I emailed Rich, Stephen Sullivan, Mark Landry, and Olivia, and John Ruda at that. I did my fourth test run, there was one issue, if that's fixed, then the police department's ready to go live when the town is ready to go. So that was the last email that I had, we got in Harper's. So I tried to keep everybody in the loop.
Harper's does this regularly, I know that, Mr. Chairman, and I've spoken to Boris myself, I've spoken to people who've worked for Boris, and it's a nine to 120-day process. Any other town on the planet to get this up and running, except the town of Dudley, we're over four years now. So I don't know what the breakdown was, or the lack of cooperation, if we met 36 times, and somebody was excluded from two meetings, I don't know how that completely stops the process in its tracks, but there's got to be a better, there's got to be a better authority over it than what we have right now.
You know, and again, I just want to piggyback what Jana just said, this, I mean, obviously Harper's has been, like you said before, my words, front burner, back burner, momentum, no momentum. But what we're doing now, we as a board, I don't want to speak for everybody, but me as chairman, this is a direct result of DLS, which was a direct result of... as chairman, this is a, a direct result of DLS, which was a direct result of citizens who came forward, several individuals in particular, one who was adamant that the state auditor was gonna come in and audit the town of Dudley, who said, no, we only come in when there's criminal issues. Why don't you guys go through DLS? We went through DLS, they came back with the bullet points, not Kerry, I think, was chairman when it first came, not Kerry, not me, not the TA, not the, not the treasurer collector, not council, they came in and said, this is what you guys need to do, and step one was formulate an action plan to see why, not just Harper's, Harper's is getting a lot of attention tonight, and it's probably one of the biggest things on that list, but not just Harper's, for example, the financial management team, codified by bylaw. We have, we have a financial management team that meets regularly. I haven't been to any meetings, I almost came about Friday ago, but I was taught I wasn't needed to come, and I'm, I'm sure some meetings take a half hour, some take forty-five minutes, some might take two. I mean, the, this, the things we're talking about tonight, there's a lot of, like, spotlight on Harper's, that was a big, big component of that report. But this, what is going on is a, a, a direct result of an action taken by a state agency that came in and performed their function. And I don't doubt Mr. Ruda, I don't doubt Mr. Camagnani, I don't doubt Mr. Shains. If Harper's can get up and, has been up and running in a matter of months in other towns, we have emails, emails going back to 2019. And again, it's not, it's not you, it's not Jana, Jana's been through the board, it's, I've been here the longest, okay, I'll take the heat, maybe I should...
Harper's needs to know who's in charge, and my recommendation is, we, we make this a recurring agenda item, we, we ask Rich to follow through, if he has a timeline, he can present, that's great, at the next agenda item, but we've gotta continually, every single time we meet, find what the progress is, because it will move nowhere. Four years, and it's moved nowhere.
I mean, that, as chairman, I suppose I can unilaterally request Harper's as an agenda item, but I would prefer the input of the board. Is everybody comfortable with that, or is that an action, a first step? Rich?
I, I don't agree that this has been simmering on the back burner. I think none of this was feasible until all of the coding had been done. We're, we're having a discussion and had to change the methodology of it. Everything that was done prior to that point was all for naught, because you have different payroll dollar amounts paid to contractual, contracted employees. There was a way to do it, and that was the, the heavy behind-the-scenes lift. If you're looking for a follow-up, I'm, I'm happy to go through and report back. We have a meeting in one week. The earth will not move in that one week. If we could schedule it out two weeks, three weeks, whatever is a reasonable time to get a plan together to do something, I'd be happy to report back to, to the board where we are. And if it's a vendor, or if it's seen that there are other vendors who would suit the town of Dudley's needs better, then that would be my report back. If A, B, and C needed to be done to get this specific project, or the more modern version of it moving forward, absolutely.
Kerry? I, I just, I'd like to read the section from the DLS review that they had given to us. This is item number ten. I don't believe they're listed in any, I don't believe they're ranked in importance. This is just a few sentences, I, I think it's important, and I say this out loud, I think it'll give us direction from here. Number ten is prioritize Harper payroll self-serve implementation. We recommend that town officials meet to identify the final list of items required to activate features within the Harper's payroll system. Once fully implemented, the treasurer-collector staff will have time freed up to accomplish other important tasks in the office. The process for collecting and entering employee time and attendance information is time-consuming. Harper's has an added feature that enables decentralized data entry of employee time and attendance by individual employees and workflows for manager review and approval, which Dudley has been working to implement for months without a conclusive date for final implementation. So, as I read this, I think we need two things. I think we need town officials to meet to identify the final list of items that's required to get this going, and we need a conclusive date for final implementation. Those are the two things we need.
We've done fifty percent of it, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a final, do we have a final list of items that need to be done?
They've met. They've met.
It would involve...
Good luck getting a final list of items.
It would be from the vendor to identify sort of where we are, and be able to butt up with the last adjustment and where we need to be for implementation. If you wanna take that as gospel, it says we should be scanning all of the bills. We had a scanner in place as of November 1st, and it doesn't mention it in there. So, timing on that might be an issue. Also, I, I think those are general guidelines.
Scanning's a different item than number ten, I'm looking at.
Agreed, but we're, we're, we're making reference to something that is a best practice. You, you have somebody putting, offering something up as room for an improvement, there's a reason you have a financial team being assembled, so that, moving forward, you don't need to follow the template, you get your department heads in, and when it comes to a financial item, things are reviewed, and you can act independently. You don't have to refer back to the book, you have a town administrator, you have a town accountant, you have an assistant town accountant, you have an assessor, treasurer-collector, and when necessary, somebody else is going to be brought in to make those decisions. The idea that it's one of the tools that's recommended. I agree that there should be some financial team meetings to move projects forward, to review the budget, so that we don't go down the rabbit hole trying to calculate normal cost for your Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment, items like that. Again, I've, I've, I've offered a return with, with contact for the, with the vendor, and a plan, or better information.
Well, here's my question. And again, maybe you were correct, we don't have a dedicated person on the masthead that says, I'm in charge of Harper's. I don't think Harper's should be refusing to, they didn't refuse. I don't think Harper's should not be answering an email from any elected official for status. But I would like, you drew something out before, I would like to have Harper's, I'm sure they won't come in. Tell us why, if it's a nine-month process, why is it taking so long? If it's ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days? I mean, if they're the experts, they should be able to say, this is, as our professional opinion, this is what the problem is. This is where the bottleneck or the momentum has come and gone, or whatever the case may be, and if we can't get Harper's, we should look somewhere else. We're paying for Harper's, we're paying for Veda. That question came up when you were working with Deb Thibodeau. How many modules weren't we not using that we were paying for? Why, why are we paying for outside services that are supposed to help make life easy for the treasurer-collector, and by extension, the town administrator, by extension, the town accountant?
Everybody.
Right, or the department heads. I mean, I, I sense the frustration from department heads. I, again, it, I guess maybe I'm oversimplifying. It's amazing to me that a, a department head can't, has to send an Excel spreadsheet, so it has to be fixed on the second floor, when you have department heads or admins telling you they would do it through the system. And I don't understand, I go ESS, why an employee, after, I mean, how many months or years we were doing this, can't do, again, read-only, is that, is that like Cobalt? I don't know, but why they can't ESS and say, oh, I took six hours sick leave last week, and they must have made a mistake, they paid me my regular rate. I'm gonna bring it to my supervisor's attention. I'm not saying an employee can alter their timesheet, and then they go to see their supervisor, and the supervisor says, oh, I have access to Harper, I can fix it. They shouldn't have to do an Excel, Excel spreadsheet modification, my word, and, like, to use the chief's example, come in at nine o'clock on a Monday, and I'm sure Rich downstairs, not that he wouldn't do his job, I'm not saying that, like Chief said, the last thing he wants to do is have somebody come in and say, I could've fixed this this morning, but these seven things are wrong, and I don't have access to it. And if I oversimplify it, I apologize. But that's the take I got from the chief. Jay?
So, Chairman, I move that we, we put this topic back on the next agenda and ask for the Harper's representative to attend either live or virtually.
Second, and discussion?
Okay, but outside of that, what are we gonna, what are we looking for in the next two weeks leading up to that? I don't want, I don't want it to linger for two weeks. We, are we gonna ask? It's, I know, listen...
Draft of a plan.
Well, let's step by step for Harper's.
Draft of a plan for the activities that need to be completed for implementation.
With an estimate of how long it would take?
That's usually what a plan has, usually. List of activities, who is responsible, and how long is it gonna take?
So, who, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I think...
Even if it's a draft, even if it's a foundation, even if it's the, the first, step one or two of that, as long as we know the things that need to be done, and then maybe we can estimate how long it takes after. I think that's a reasonable ask.
And I, I think, Mr. Chairman, we've been on the same page, what Mr. Johnson is suggesting is what we've been trying to do. Maybe with Mr. Shains, as having reached out to Harper's as a member of the board, we'll get some sort of response from Harper's to actually develop that kind of a time, that kind of a, of a plan.
I, I had offered to deliver that, thank you.
Well, we appreciate that.
And, and at, at the end of the day, all of the insurance withholdings and the tax withholdings and the direct deposits, the treasurer goes through and remits taxes that are withheld, so it, it's coming from my office, please allow me to go through and put together the sketch of what the discussions with the vendors say. Back to what you were...
Mr. Chairman, we got a motion, second.
Well, wait a minute, Kerry had a comment.
We're going off the track here.
Yeah, I, I know one way we can eliminate half of the payroll work, number eleven, consider bi-weekly payroll. So, right there, we're going to take away half. And that's from the DLS, that's not me saying it, that's them, number eleven. So, I, I, I wanted to ask Jana, because she had spent, she's spent quite a bit of time on this. I, I wanna hear what you think for next steps.
I think the very next step is getting a list of what has already been delivered and what's still outstanding from the vendor. I don't think that's something we can do internally, because it's, the information is just too, I think it's too siloed a little bit with what exactly has been done. There are a thousand email chains with a thousand comments, and they're not all, they didn't all originate in our, in our office, they didn't all originate in the town administrator's office, so I don't have, I don't have access to all of that. My personal next step is to try to get the vendor on the phone. If the emails are going unanswered, I'm gonna start leaving messages, like...
If I could ask, the, the motion that Mr. Johnson made about, could you word that, I'm, you, you had said about next step?
Move the topic to the next agenda, with the, the intention of having the Harper representative either live or virtual, and the beginnings of the rough plan, as Mr. Shain mentioned.
Can, can we have a vote to somehow authorize Jana, just to give that...
I have an objection with that, Mr. Chairman.
Where they're going, excuse me, I'm speaking, thank you, I have the floor, to give her, so she has something, so she's not gonna get blown off. It, it bothers me that someone from the Board of Selectment would get blown off.
Well, that was gonna be my question and discussion. Rich offered to, to the reach out. We, as, as the executive board, do we wanna delegate one of our members, almost like fresh set of eyes or fresh questions?
Yeah, it, it's been how long? And we're running in place. And I don't mean this as a negative to anybody, I just wanna get this done. This, this DLS list, and I'm, I'm gonna take number two out, because that seems to be the, the big political hot button. Number two out. Everything else, we, we gotta, this is the state telling us what we can do to, to be more efficient. People ask for an audit. I, I, I can still hear someone asking for a forensic and a managerial audit. Forensic audit, too much money, almost a million bucks, that'll be eight, nine hundred grand, easy. But a managerial audit, that's what this pretty much is. They're giving us a roadmap of what to do, it's right here. Let's do it.
So, I already heard Rich say I object, but my question to the administrator is it within our scope, is the executive board, to have a member reach out to Harper's and say, this is what the board wants, this is what we need, as opposed, like I say, Rich offered, but instead of having intermediary do it, have one of our members do it?
It's definitely within your scope, I mean...
I believe it's in within your scope.
Your chief executive board.
Do you want that, or would you rather have us?
Excuse me, we have, we have counsel weighing in on things? I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna ask a question, Rich, so give me one second.
He, he, they asked if...
All right, I...
The executive officers of the town had the authority to do that. That's a legal question, and I did weigh in, and I said, yes, in my opinion, they did.
Okay, you're not here specifically for any of this, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
But as a courtesy, I invited him up to the table, and I should...
And, and, and I appreciate counsel's adding in when, when requested, absolutely.
So, that was gonna be my question to Attorney Blake. And again, you're here for something else, but as every other meeting I've been chairman or been involved in, we always bring you up with questions, whether it's you, Michelle, Attorney Rendazzo, sorry, Attorney Terry. Again, I put you on the spot, and if you don't have any answer, I completely... If I, if I was to authorize the town administrator to call you with that exact question, is it within our statutory authority, and you recommend that the course of action we should take? Is that your feeling, that that's something we should do?
Well, it's certainly within your statutory authority. It certainly is. Now, whether or not that's something you should do is, I, I don't know that that's a legal question, I think that, I, I, the familiarity I have with this is probably what the last twenty minutes of discussion. So, but it, I believe it's certainly within your authority as the chief executive of the, of the town.
Mr. Chairman, based on that discussion, amend my motion to ask Mr. Shain to spirit that activity.
Second agrees.
And as long as somehow the minutes will reflect that, although we didn't have him here for that purpose, counsel said it was a prudent action. Like, at one of the minutes, not part of your motion, but I wanted the...
Not interested in any of that, so...
Well, so, so the vote, call to a vote. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Anyanis. Are you gonna stand? Four, zero, one. So, when it comes time for the minutes, I'm gonna ask that, it just included that Attorney Blake weighing in. Not part of the motion, I just want it to be part of the record. Is that what that? You good? You all done with your?
Done.
Rich, thank you. Next joint budget meeting, thanks, town administrator.
We have an April fourteenth meeting we're gonna add, right? We're adding that one?
Correct.
And we also have one already on the books, the April twenty-eighth. April fourteenth, we'll have the, hopefully, the big budget spreadsheet with a balanced recommendation from me, based on the input from these series of meetings and the finance team, so hopefully we'll be ready to vote on that on the fourteenth, and then we'll have the twenty-eighth as a tentative meeting, but we'll, we'll definitely have a, a meeting on the fourteenth.
Next report?
Yep. Here's, here's gonna be a real quick report. We're scheduled to meet internally with our legislators to discuss the next steps and our options for funding of the bridge. I spoke, that's gonna happen on the fourteenth. During that meeting, we're also gonna bring up what type of impacts cutting the federal Department of Education might have on us locally, in terms of our, our, our funding towards education, and I'm gonna try to get them on an upcoming agenda, either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. I spoke to Representative Marcy this afternoon, and he added an amendment...
I spoke to Representative Marcy this afternoon, and he added an amendment to the supplemental budget for this fiscal year, the state budget. He and Representative Joe McKenna from Webster added an amendment, put 2.5 million back into the budget as an amendment to try to fund the, the bridge between here and the Mil, the...
Mill race?
Mill race bridge. Not a lot, not, I wouldn't put, I wouldn't put betting odds on it, but I just want everybody to know that we're making every single effort, even to the point where he's calling me last minute, he's got 90 minutes to put an amendment in. So we've gotten that done, and we're gonna move forward with the other stuff. We'll report out as to any other source of funding we can identify for the bridge, and we'll see if we can give an update publicly as to what sort of impact the Department of Education change might have to us locally. I don't know if you'll have a good answer for us, but they may not know at this point. But we'll have an idea as to if there's a plan in place. That's it.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Motion made second. All in favor, state aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention unanimous. ETA?
Nothing tonight.
George? Chief? Chair chief? MJ? Sarah?
Yes. You could take one item off that, Emma, that list. I, I worked today to file the amended Harper report and put all the obligations and expenditures. So hopefully that's cleaned up.
Israelist?
What?
Israelist?
From the DLS report?
I was just about to ask. Thank you.
Oh.
So there's a check next to one of them.
Remember there was a...
Yes, there was a check.
Money was put in a longer account that didn't exist. But that was... Rich? Treasurer collector, Scott, all set? Departmental, I mean, on board members, Mr. Sigunovich?
I think I've said enough for one day. Thank you.
Jana?
Mark?
No, sir.
Jay?
No.
I'm just gonna say, you know, it was, I think it was good give and take tonight, you know? We just gotta get some of this stuff going. You know, people spoke, they wanted the DLS report, and there's a lot of things in there, and we came up with an action plan. So I want to thank everybody tonight, and thanks for sticking with us. Looks like we might have a balanced budget going forward, so. Robin, you're the last one left. Anything for FAA?
No.
All right, everybody.
I'll say one thing, but I...
Go ahead.
I don't know if it has to be in the record. I have 25 years of IT project management experience, including very large implementations. And I, I can say first of all, that a vendor can give you a timeline, and they never include the time it takes your end users to test. They're, they're always shortchanging that. 100%. Yeah. And I think that one of the first things you need is to have documented requirements, and that would come from the department heads as well as our finance people. For example, I need to be able to go in and modify hourly pay for any of my employees based on, I don't know, what shift they work, whatever. So in writing, must have, nice to have. I don't know if that exists yet. And that comes before project plan. That's like one line item in the project plan, document requirements. So good luck.
Thank you. So...
You're gonna read?
You want, want someone else? Go ahead. I'm done.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, police chief, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. Gentex, TEP in town of Dudley, and the chair so declares, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Eagle Drive Waterline, and not to reconvene into open session.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. Roll call vote.
Kerry Sigunovich, aye.
Jana DeShane, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
And not to reconvene an open session unless the vote is necessary. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.